It's this one, sir.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It's out of the process.
Okay.
Just edit that down there.
Okay.
Brian, Brian, could you hand this to? It's, no, just hand it to Nova while you're going down there.
I think he's. Okay. Okay. Thanks.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It's July 1st, 2025, and we are at Carmel by the Sea City Hall, and I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Carmel by the Sea City Council to order at 4:31 PM. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Barron.
Here.
Councilmember Booter.
Here.
Mayor Protem Delves.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jamoff.
Here.
Mayor Byrne.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Would everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started with today's proceedings, I'd like to thank the council for approving a project to upgrade the audio visual equipment in this chamber. That project has been completed, short of some final adjustments to some cabinetry. Assistant City Administrator Swanson and our IT team has been integrally involved with the contractor, Conti. I've been looking in over the last couple of weeks, and it has been a well-executed project. Brandon, I think it's appropriate for you to cover a slide or two that will inform everyone of the exciting enhancements and let them know how we can give it, they can give us feedback as we fine-tune these sophisticated systems. Could you give us a quick review?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So Nova has a couple of slides if you're gonna pop up here downstairs. If you guys could pop it up on the screen for us, that'd be great. But as Mayor said, you know, we've been, we've been hard at work over the last two and a half weeks updating the chambers. You probably see some new equipment here floating around. And.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. A lot of new major systems. You know, we got new cameras and projectors, a new screen. You can see a lot of stuff that you don't see downstairs. We've got new video processing equipment, new broadcast switcher, processing for audio so that it sounds better in the chambers and outside of the chambers, all kinds of fancy new gear. We've got new microphones. We've got a new presentation system, not only here at this podium where someone can show up with a laptop and plug right into the podium. We've also got some wireless equipment that people can plug into laptops. So when folks show up and want to present something to you, we don't have to go through a whole rigmarole to do it. We've got this fancy new microphone here at the podium. Even for tall people like me, I don't have to mess around with a tall microphone anymore. It just picks up audio. We've got new room microphones. As you can see behind me, these are not giant record albums. They're not on right now, but what these are for is when we have our sort of town hall style meetings just on the floor of the chambers, we circle the chairs and talk about a topic. We're not using the dais. This can pick up the audio from the room so we can interact with the people that are joining via Zoom, not have to pass around. For those of you that have suffered through one of those meetings before, pass around the talking stick every time somebody wants to talk. So the room microphones can, can make that a lot better way. And a lot of other minor new system adjustments. This is what it looks like downstairs. For any Star Wars fans, it looks a little bit like the Death Star control panel with that little lever that you push forward. I promise there's no green lasers that come out of City Hall when we do it, though. So a lot of really fancy, wonderful new equipment down there that's gonna help us really do what this chambers now does with online production. A lot of new capabilities that supports those roundtable meetings that I talked about at the floor here. Where, as the mayor mentioned, we were debugging the system yesterday about an hour before we started, so we still have a couple of things left to do. The television, there's new speakers in the ceiling out in the lobby that, that will have audio out in the lobby. If there's overflow here, people can watch the proceedings out there on the TV. As I mentioned, people can direct connect to this podium. They can present from a wireless device. There's Nova's DJ station over here because we're gonna turn revenue having raves on the weekend in City Hall. Nova, really what this is, there's gonna be a built-in desk here that looks like it fits in this chambers. It's being built for us custom right now. It was not done yet, but all the equipment will be attached underneath, and it'll be a little bit more Feng Shui looking over here, but Nova's excited about that. So dedicated clerk station, which freed up space for all of you. Some more, more space on the chambers or on the dais. We actually peeled back the shelf around the dais here to create some more space for you as well. There is a Voice of God feature, that's what it's called in the industry, but gentlemen, can you demo the Voice of God feature, please?
Hello, Carmel, this is the control room.
So there you go. When we're having issues up here, we can actually have a conversation with them downstairs. People usually see me on my cellphone texting, but what I'm usually doing is texting downstairs, saying, oh, my God, the audio isn't working or whatever. So now we can have those conversations. We've got a timer visible on the podium. There's a little piece of equipment on here. It's gonna show speakers, the timer, it's gonna show up on all of your computer screens and all show, also show up on the screen so we all know what's going on with the timer. The projector screen, Chip's been asking for years for an automatic projector screen that goes up and down when the system turns on, so we don't have to use that stick anymore to pull down our computer, our projector screen. As I mentioned, upgraded audio capabilities. We're just really excited about what this chambers is now going to be able to do. We've made little tweaks. The cameras are slightly lower for better angles in production, and those that have seen it online know that the picture is much better than it used to be. Couple of other additional improvements. I mentioned the clerk desk. We oriented the speakers so they point down. It's probably, you could notice that the audio is a little easier to hear in here. And we cleaned up the walls a little bit. We still have more work to do. We've got some little refinishing and patching to do on the walls, but minor things. As I mentioned, it's a rollout process. We have some, some punch lift items left to do. Refine the cameras, do some audio refinements. We heard last night that those people that saw the YouTube video after it had been published, the audio was kind of low, so we figured out what that is. There's a different signal that we send to YouTube than we send to Zoom, so we're working on that. Need to finish patching the walls. But we're gonna refine the system after we're done with the city council meeting. So feedback is welcome, not only from council, but from those people viewing online, you know, send me an email, send the mayor an email, he'll get it to me, send Chip an email, Nova, whoever. We welcome the feedback. We, we want a system that works for everybody and really works well, so please, please tell us what we can do to make it better. A lot of thank yous. First of all, thank you to city council. This wasn't a cheap project, so thank you for prioritizing this for us as staff and also for our community. This is gonna make our interaction better with them. Thank you to our IT staff, who was, who played a big part in this, Joel and Dan. Our city clerk, Nova, helped a lot figuring out how this room functions because she's really the quarterback of this room up here. Our public works maintenance staff, who played a huge role in just getting things in and out of here. Our library staff, who made sure that all this art was safe. This, all this art came down and went back up while we started and when we came back. So over a two-week period, this art was safely stored somewhere. Conti, as I mentioned, was our contractor. And out of the woods was the woodworking team that helped us peel back this upper shelf on the dais and building this table. So it was really, it really was a team up here. It wasn't just one or two people, but we couldn't have done it without everyone. So I seem excited because I am. I'm gonna stop talking. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you. Let's give some applause to see what it sounds like. I can tell you that Margaret's gonna be very happy now. That's how this all started. All right, we're gonna move on to extraordinary business, and we're gonna begin that today by recognizing and hearing from some outstanding and important members of our community. They'll be brief, but meaningful. The first is we're shining a spotlight on a great resource for the peninsula, MeEarth. Katie Renneker, their new executive director, will be giving us a brief overview of this amazing organization and place. I recently participated in a wonderful 30th anniversary gathering at MeEarth, attended by their board members, donors, and supporters. I think you will be surprised and impressed if you haven't seen this before. Katie?
Thank you so much. Thanks everybody for being here. Give me just a few minutes of your time. My name is Katie Renneker, and I'm the new second director of MeEarth. And I want to thank you, Mayor, and Council for having us here just for a few brief minutes. What is MeEarth? MeEarth is a place to connect the me to the earth, and that helps you learn how to pronounce it as well, MeEarth. Our mission is to educate and inspire through environmental stewardship. Where are we located? We're right next to Carmel Middle School. We're adjacent, we're on the property, but we are owned 501(c)(3). What do we do? We bring a lot of school kids, including all of CUSD, onto the campus to learn about STEM, ecology, wellness education. Over the last school year, we had over 4,000 visitors onto MeEarth at the Hilton Violet Habitat. The primary people who come are CUSD middle school students, and they're doing everything from language arts and science to actual language classes as well. That's all hands-on with the garden and with the kitchen. We have service learning colleges that come, primarily CSU MB. We have over 30 every semester that come and get real-life, hands-on learning at a nonprofit and working with kids. We have our community days. Hopefully, some of you guys have been to MeEarth Day, and coming up is the Glass Pumpkin Patch. And these are really wonderful days for us to welcome people onto MeEarth, to enjoy the garden, to enjoy the kitchen, to just have a day of community together outside unplugged and connecting to our natural world. Community partners, we also bring people in from Boys and Girls Club, CPY, Village Project, and a lot of Title I schools get to come to MeEarth thanks to funding from donors and foundations so that we can make MeEarth and the education much more accessible to people in our county. And summer camp is happening right now. We've got a lot of really fun eco explorers and bedding chefs that are working in the garden, harvesting, and then making meals for, for their family and for themselves. Off-site, we had over 5,700 participants in community outreach programs. So we're small but mighty. We've got emergency food relief. Every single week, over 200 families receive produce that's grown on MeEarth property. That's 80% of what we grow is given away every single week in Big Sur at the Big Share. Community partners, I already mentioned, those that not only onsite but offsite, we connect, connect with them. We also connect with local school gardens, and maybe a school has a garden on their site, and we help them integrate it into their community, into their curriculum. And community events, we go out into the community for different health fairs and community festivals coming up locally. We've got the Carmel Valley Fiesta where we will be. And we were bringing our mobile farm stand. So this is a new project we, we did last year that brings produce as our ambassadors out into the world. That's a picture of the produce stand on the left there. What is on the horizon right now? We have summer volunteering, so you're welcome if you want to come and get your own hands in the dirt and work with school kids during summer camp. You are welcome to come. We have an indigenous cuisine workshop coming up on the 7th. We have our mobile farm stand is gonna be at Carmel Valley Fiesta on the 2nd and 3rd, and the Glass Pumpkin Patch, which is one of our primary fundraisers. It's a really beautiful community event. If you haven't been prepared to be blown away by the artwork that is glass-blown pumpkins from local artists. The next big ideas, our amphitheater is crumbling, and so we're working on making sure we can bring that as another outdoor classroom space back. And we were given 17 redwood trees this year, and it is our, what we're working on right now is a proposal to bring a redwood grove to MeEarth as another outdoor learning space for ecology and just for community gathering. Two big funding, fundraising things that are happening because we are losing some of our grants that are expiring in order to continue our Title I accessibility, in order to bring school kids to MeEarth that cannot otherwise get here. And also our organic produce as medicine, that is the food that goes to, to the Big Share every year. Those are both expiring grants, and we are hoping to do our best to fundraise and cover those so we can continue that vital work right here in our own community. So that's it for me for right now. My door is open. I would love to connect with you guys. I am new to the organization, but not new to Carmel Valley. I've lived here in the area for 25 years. So I'm thrilled to reach out. Please get in touch and let's communicate. Thanks.
Thanks, Katie. Hopefully, some of you will take advantage of her invitation. It's, it really is an amazing place. Next, we're gonna receive an informative report by Dave Stolt, general manager of Monterey Peninsula Water District, on the situation with water on the Monterey Peninsula. This subject was originally on our agenda planning as five minutes, but we're gonna give Dave a bit more time than that tonight, but, and, but based on his slides, based on the slides that he submitted, it seems that this important subject deserves probably much more attention, and we're gonna investigate having a workshop so we can dig into all the details and allow for more interaction with Dave and his team. Dave?
Well, thank you. This is a shorter version of a presentation that every city council has received earlier this calendar year, as well as the Board of Supervisors, and it's about the water allocation process, water will, well, is now available at each jurisdiction. So we have allocated water. What is an allocation? It's like placing a credit in your bank account. You don't have the water. It's water that's dedicated to the city on behalf of your citizens and your businesses, and it represents, as I said, an account that gets decremented until it reaches close to zero, and then you come back and say, we need more, and we will do our best to get it to you. How does it interact with the permit process? You have a developer comes in, wants to develop a project, he goes to you or to your building department and says, I've got this plan, it's gonna need this much water. You sign a water release form. They bring that water release form to the district. We issue a water permit. That water permit enables them to get their building permit. When the project is complete, we do a final inspection to make sure that the usage of water is at what was permitted. And the reason we're here now is we've got a new project called Pure Water Monterey Expansion that's bringing just over 2,000 new acre feet to the mix. We've already, as I mentioned, implemented this via ordinance, went into effect March 1st of this year. It won't solve everything. We still have a cease and desist order, which means you can't get a meter set. That's job one, the remainder of our focus for this year, beginning of the second half of the year today. We're working with State Water Board on trying to do that. So how much water is there? This is just a simple summary of all the existing projects with the expansion before the desalination plant comes online, about 12,000 acre feet. This is what water demand has been doing, though, and we are now at a new low in 2024, just under 9,000 square feet, uh, acre feet. So you look to historical demand to set the base, where are we today? And we looked at the last three years, last five years, last 10 years, and we landed on the last five years as an average for what we're using now, so about 9,500. We also know how water is used, and we're about two-thirds residential, that's why it's a bigger pie, one-third non-residential, and you can see Carmel's role in that mix. And every city uses water differently, and they'll grow differently. So you take the total supplies, the current demand, and you say, okay, we've got about 2,600, 2,500 acre feet of available supply. As a factor of safety, we hold back about 1,000 acre feet, which means we've got 1,559 to allocate. Doesn't mean we're going to allocate all of the water that's available. The next question is, how much will each city need going forward? So we rely on AMBAC, the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments. They do a econometric model, multivariate model, every four years. It's a very good model, and they estimate job growth, which we apply the growth rate to the non-residential water use, and they estimate population growth. We apply that growth rate to, to the residential water use. So Carmel's current five-year average demand, about 636 acre feet per year, very low residential growth rate projected by AMBAC, higher commercial growth rate, and no service provided by others. There are certain jurisdictions which have other sources of water. So the 25-year water need based on that forecast, about 25 acre feet. So I mentioned AMBAC. Now, AMBAC does three things. They do a regional growth forecast, which I just mentioned. They do a metropolitan transportation plan, which is a measure of how do we accommodate that growth through our transportation, as well as a sustainable community strategy, and that's every four years. And then by Senate Bill 375, they do the linkage between the regional housing needs allocation, which is on every eight years, and all of those are on the same cycle. But it's a problem because this year, or in 2022, the six-cycle RENA numbers projected 349 units of new housing here, but only 35 new people over 25 years. Doesn't, doesn't add up. So we said, okay, what are we planning for? 35 people or 350 houses? And we said, you know, people use water, houses, empty houses don't use water, so we have a conundrum. So we also went and we looked at the mix of housing for each city based on the very low, low, moderate, and above moderate in your housing needs. And then we assigned the types of mix of housing, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and so forth. And we came up with a, a number for if houses used water, how much would those houses use? And then we added them together and divided by two, so high-low mathematics involved. So what, what it did is it made an adjustment for the RENA numbers, and Carmel needing went from 25 to 43 acre feet for the future. And that 43 acre feet is what we began with in allocation for the cities. We said, we're gonna give you a third of your allocation except for Delray Oaks. That's 14 acre feet. You had 2.6 remaining. We added that together on March 1st. There's a typo, it's not March 1st, 2024, it's 2025. And that leaves your current and total allocation at 16. And the reason we did a third is we wanna see who's gonna grow, who's really committed to new housing starts. But we have in retention, as you see at the bottom of the page, over 2,000 acre feet of supply available. So we encourage you to not ration your water, not prioritize it. Treat, I'm not just gonna say first come, first served, but try to be kind of expansive in your, your approach. Remodels are okay, commercial growth is okay. If you run out, or one of the other jurisdictions run out, we will do another allocation. And that is about as short as I can make.
Very interesting.
Any questions?
Council have any questions, quick ones? Looks not, that demand curve is pretty astounding, isn't it?
It's astounding, and the cause of it is that woman in the back room with the rules that she's developed since, uh, two, well, since the 80s, but we've been very vigorous in about 2002.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we're now gonna open the floor to public appearances. Nova, could you read the public appearances notice, please?
Yes. At this time, members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern that are not on tonight's agenda. Each person's comments shall be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the mayor. For all public comments, persons are not required to provide their names. However, it's helpful for speakers to state their names so they may be identified in the minutes of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, public comment for matters on the agenda must relate to that agenda item, and public comments for matters not on the agenda must relate to the subject matter jurisdiction of this legislative body. If a member of the public attending the meeting in person or online violates the Brown Act by failing to comply with these requirements, then that speaker will be muted.
Thank you, Nova. How many people plan on making a comment of general municipal concern tonight? All right, why don't you line up, please? Looks like we have about six.
I just wanna say what an amazing council you are. I've been trying to write a letter to the editor, but I just couldn't get it right, so I decided to come here. I don't know if the average person in Carmel understands how much time a devoted council member gives to this job. I know you get stacks of papers because if you come across my desk and I can't continue to focus on them, so I understand what you're doing. You attend meeting after meeting. Some of the meetings go late. You are available to the public for different copies and things that people wanna talk to you about. This is an exceptional council, and I want you to know how much I appreciate and other people that I've talked to appreciate what you are all contributing. I think you're amazing. I, I feel that you're dedicated to do the right thing. I feel that you're transparent, which is, has been a very big issue for me getting involved. I feel that you're very respectful, not only of the community, but also of each other. And I think you set a wonderful example, and it's refreshing. And we are all so lucky that you are all serving, and I am very proud of how you are, what you are accomplishing and how you are accomplishing your tasks. So thank you.
It's very kind of you, Andy, and we appreciate all the help that you give us. Good evening, good afternoon.
Ken White, and I'm chair of the Grids to Everywhere Committee, which I heard, I think you know a little bit about. We are, we're hoping very strongly we can expedite the agreement with the cities, we can get on with phase one. Phase one would be the outer limits of the city of Carmel by the Sea, a hiking trail, walking trail, running trail, dog walking, cat walking, monkey, whatever. But it's gonna be a beautiful trail around, people can exercise on, close to the city. The best part about it is, for the Chamber of Commerce, is we're gonna be bringing some people that nor nearly wouldn't come to Carmel, that fit people, they like to hike, they're not afraid to get sweaty, but that's the kind of people, it's a new type of person you're gonna have walking down Ocean Avenue because that's the end of the local hike. When we get the first phase done, we're going to the next phase, which is cross the river. You can hike to Big Point Lobos or out the valley to the park. So there's some big things that happen, but we've got it, we need an agreement with the city. If we could expedite that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Can everybody in the chambers hear okay?
Yeah.
I, I wanna check, is there anything? Brandon, can they crank it up a little bit downstairs? I just wanna make sure since we just started. I'd hate for you to go through this and not know what they're saying.
I'll speak extra loud.
And, and just one second. Brandon, at some point, you also should point out the assisted hearing, because I didn't even know we had that. And we do have one, maybe, maybe at the next council meeting, we could give a little primer. All right, thanks. Go ahead, Nancy, sorry.
Great, Nancy Toomey, thank you for what city staff and all of you do, as well as all of boards and commissions. You guys are really cranking, and it's great. And I'm sure you're not looking for more to do. However, comma, I, last night, I bought up as a kind of a virtual polling of an item on the agenda last night about the fire zone maps. And I am feeling a lot of angst personally and hearing from other residents that we are not getting information from our city with regard to how we're supposed to be acting on the information we're getting from the, the Monterey Fire, et cetera. All of what we are receiving so far is very generic and not specific to embracing what makes Carmel this wonderful place that we love and we live in and work in, et cetera. So my ask is that this gets some regular report out, even if it's general guidance. I understand that things like, like, you know, master plans and ordinances of the like, those are gonna take a longer time to get addressed for us to know, you know, all of the official, you know, bells and whistles and nooks and crannies of what should be done. But generalized guidance should be provided to the community on how to respond to all of this work that's being done with regard to fire prevention. Things like, you know, for instance, I was wondering why the, the roof policy that was approved by the Planning Commission didn't get coverage in this week's, this week's meetings, and it didn't, and I don't know why that didn't happen. There's guidance like, you know, obviously make sure your roofs are clean and gutters and, and remove wood chips as ground cover. Those are things that are non, you know, not significant items, but should be reinforced via the voice of the city council and/or city staff. via the voice of the city council and/or city staff officially on the small steps that can and should be done by the community with regard to fire zone maps. And it was said that information was available, but there was no closed loop on that. So my call to action is to get some sort of even minor guidance, knowing that more will follow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chief Miller, Hans, and I hear you loud and clear.
Good afternoon, everyone, and I'm Amy Herzog, here on behalf of Visit Carmel, just to express our heartfelt thanks and gratitude to this entire community for a really successful fifth annual Carmel Culinary Week, which took place last month. You know, our goals for this year were to create a little more of a festival-like atmosphere and to bring some of the events, kind of utilize a little more of the charm and whimsy of this village. And, you know, that expansion this year really made such a huge difference. So thank you, city council, for your support and partnership with Visit Carmel. Your partnership is a big part of why this was able to happen, and huge thank you to city staff, community activities, public works, public safety, you know, your, their hard work, their competence is what helps these events go off without a hitch, and it's so seamless because they're so good at what they do, and we're just so appreciative of that. Also to our restaurant community and our wine community, we are so lucky that they choose to make Carmel by the Sea their home and bring their creativity, their hard work and their artistry here so that they're enhancing our community, not just for the visitor, but for the locals alike. And, you know, we were thrilled to see this year, we had about sixty percent of our attendees from the Monterey Peninsula and about forty percent from out of town, so really thrilled with that breakout. Probably one of the most frequent comments that was, that I heard was so many people said to us, this whole week was just so Carmel. And we take that as a huge compliment, and I believe what was meant by that was just that, you know, the event was very boutique in scale, very thoughtful in its themes, a lot of artistic touches, and, you know, just bringing in the original charm that only Carmel by the Sea has. So again, I just want to express our thanks, and for anyone who missed it this year, we'll have a sixth annual. If you want to check out some of our social media videos, it gives you a really good idea of kind of what the week really looked like, and it was really just quite special. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. You, you and your partners put on some very creative activities, and I got to go to the Friday, and it was, it was really amazing, it really was, thank you. Hi, Beth.
It was amazing and fun to see. Good afternoon, Mayor Byrne, council members, and city staff. I'm Beth Bowman, the executive director of the Sunset Cultural Center. On behalf of the Sunset Center, I'd like to extend our sincere thanks to Carmel Cares for supplying plants to our Plaza Beautification Project. Our landscapers completed the installation of the plants, refreshed our irrigation, and added mulch to protect, just in time for the Carmel Bach Festival, so we're proud to help make Carmel even more beautiful for residents and visitors alike, and again, thank you for that support.
Thank you. Looking forward to the Bach Festival. Hi.
Good evening, lady, lady and gentlemen of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to address the critical issue, the urgent need to release water credits to residents, our residents. We have a sufficient water allocation to support up to two hundred and fifty new housing units and enable remodels of existing residents and businesses, with another allocation coming in October. While we may not have low-income units ready to build immediately, there is no reason to deny water credits for minor additions and accessory dwelling units now to meet our current needs. By doing so, we do not only support our residents and businesses, but also demonstrate responsible usage, enhancing our chances of securing additional water resources for future low-income housing developments. Cities like Seaside have already taken action to release water, so let's adopt a measured and strategic distribution strategy that truly supports all of our residences and businesses. Thanks.
Pretty timely comment tonight.
I have a timely comment also. Hi, I'm Erin Allen, I'm speaking as a resident of Carmel by the Sea. Thank you, mayor, thank you, council members, thank you for all that you do. I want to just give you three takeaways, and that is that I want to emphasize that water, the water distribution that was addressed tonight, if we could look at it and, and really focus on it immediately, because I don't want to see this being put off or delayed any longer. As you heard from the presentation, we have water, so let's take a mindset of abundance as we approach that, and then we have the ability to fulfill both the housing element and also the residents' requests. So I think that it's a very urgent matter, and then this is a win-win. We can make the residents happy, and we can fulfill our commitments to the state. And so please don't wait, adopt a measured, adopt a measure as soon as possible, and so that our community can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, we'll discuss that. Anybody else? One online. Go ahead, Nova.
Will, on Zoom, you can unmute yourself.
We are working on a Zoom product, problem down here in the control room, one moment, we're sorry.
Can everybody hear a little better now, after they turned it up? Yes, no?
Echoing.
Okay, it's okay?
It's echoing.
Yeah, it is, we got to work on, we can't work on that tonight, but we'll work on that.
There are work on, and so the issue, one of the issues is that microphone, for some reason, it only said a mono signal versus stereo signal coming from all these mics, that's why.
I'll, I'll give my comment, despite not being able to hear you guys, so hopefully I'm not talking over anybody at the moment, but.
We can hear you, Will.
Hi, council members, my name is Will Rye. Last week, I spoke to Mr. Chip Rarig, who invited me to give another comment today regarding the Mills Act. I commented at last month's city council meeting on the same topic. To, to recap, my family owns a historic home in Carmel by the Sea that we believe is a perfect candidate for a Mills Act contract, due to a death in the family. The home has been reassessed, resulting in a property tax bill six times higher than years gone by. We hope to enter a Mills Act contract agreement with the city to help us continue to steward the home and keep it in our family. It's very special to us. When talking to Mr. Rarig last week, I learned more about the city's outlook on the program. I understand that the program is paused in part because it was sort of vulnerable to a form of abuse by applicants who are not looking to keep properties long-term. I can assure you, we're in the opposite position, and we support the return of a robust Mills Act program. I know Mr. Rarig has further plans to work with the council to achieve just that, and I want to thank him for his time and his attention on the topic, and I, I think he might speak to you guys more about that a little bit later in the meeting, but I just wanted to put that in as my comment this month, so thank you, Chip, and I'll give you guys back some time. Hopefully you guys can hear all that. Thanks.
Thank you, Will. Anybody else online?
No.
All right, so we'll close public comment, and thank everyone for your great comments tonight. So now we're going to move over to the announcements on our side. City Administrator Rarig, do you have any announcements?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, real quickly. The first thing is that some folks have been filling our public waste cans, overflowing them, especially with yard waste, and so it's just to note that the public waste cans, there's actually a science behind how we place them, because the average human being will only carry a piece of trash for so long before they drop it on the ground, that's why we have them staged at different areas. But when they're overflowing, and we do have, our waste hauling services picks up our public cans every day, but we've had several on Scenic. Mr. Mayor, I think you identified some that have been overflowing, so if you see someone doing that, please tell them that there is the service available where our waste hauler will pick up extra, extra trash and yard waste and recycling from your house. So you can contact our environmental programs division in, in Mr. Wasaki's department, our public works director, and Ken's written something for the Friday letter, but again, please be respectful of our public waste cans. Yeah, I had a great conversation with Mr. Rye and some other people about the Mills Act. Council, you know that this is something that is on our work program, we're just trying to find some capacity to add it, and when we do a gender review next week, I'll talk to the mayor, Mayor Protem, and others about, about prioritizing that. Third, I wanted to thank mostly Cleve for doing the amazing job at refinishing our handrails outside. Those were put in, I think in two thousand fourteen or thirteen, and is powder coated, so we couldn't cut them down and repowder coat them, but Cleve worked really hard at finding a, a nice brown color using a two-party epoxy, and they look really beautiful. They're a little shiny right now, but I assure you, with some sea air and some pine dust, they'll, they'll, they'll age well. And then one, one celebratory note, Mr. Mayor, and it's, it's happy and sad, after in excess of thirty-five years with the city of Carmel by the Sea, Jimmy Pingree, who drives our sweeper, you may see him early in the morning, he toots the horn and waves, he's retiring at the end of this month, so in excess of thirty-five years. I think he's our longest-serving employee at this point in time, so, and we'll do something nice for Jimmy at an upcoming council meeting. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
We absolutely, absolutely will do something nice for him, and I better get that ride with him before he leaves. He's been putting it off, but I'm going to grab him some morning when he goes by and beeps at my house on, on San Antonio. City Attorney, do you have any announcements tonight?
Yes, yes, Mayor, I do. We did have a closed session yesterday afternoon with respect to a parcel of property, it's a non-buildable parcel of property located on Scenic Road, south of Martin Way, the APN number is triple, well, double nine, four-two-three, double-three, and then triple-zero. That's the APN number. The council has requested that I announced this evening that the council is not interested in purchasing that property. And there's no announcement on any of the other closed sessions.
Right. It took a while, but we finally got an announcement from him. So I think there's some.
I do accommodate.
I, I, I got some calls today, I couldn't say anything, but I think the, the people that called will be knowledgeable about that subject now, thank you. Council persons, Jeff, do you want to start?
No announcements.
No announcements. Hans?
Yeah, so the Carmel Youth Center is looking for volunteers for Sunday, August seventeenth, at the concourse, and if you volunteer, you also get free access, which is, I think, several hundred-dollar value. So you have to be fourteen or older, which doesn't look like it's going to be a problem for this crowd. And you can email them if you're interested at info@carmelyouth.org. I also wanted to say that our next meeting of our, where's Nancy, our wildfire preparedness committee is going to be on July thirtieth at one P M. We're going to do one to two-thirty, and we are going to notice it such that, you know, if other council members or planning commissioners are interested in attending, they can attend. We have had two site visits to Pescadero Canyon and Mission Trail Nature Preserve in the past three weeks with the fire department and with city staff and with members of the committee, and it's been very helpful. We are going to be looking at, in this particular upcoming meeting, a prioritized list of fuel mitigation projects to, to try to work through and think about what we could do on that front to keep our city safer. And then, on a somewhat personal note, I wanted to thank the Carmel Police Department. On Tuesday night, someone stole my wife's purse from our car and stole some items from at least three of my neighbor's cars, and we kind of didn't piece it together until yesterday morning that we'd been robbed, but my wife called the Carmel PD, and within six hours, they had identified the suspect, incidentally with the aid of the flock cameras, located where they live, went up to Santa Cruz, took the suspect into custody, and recovered most of the stolen property. And, you know, I'll be honest, I told my wife, they don't investigate this kind of stuff, you know, this is so small, they don't have time for this, and I could not have been more wrong. I mean, we really have, I'm just incredibly impressed, you know, it's really easy, we just got through the budget, that's why you're all back now. But, you know, the, the police department, it's a big number, it looks like a cost center, but I'll tell you, you know, we are getting a very high quality of service. It's really like a concierge level of service, six hours. And so I want to give a huge shout out to Sergeant Bruno, Officer Montez, I think they really led the charge, and Commander Traer, who personally came to my house, and Chief Tomasi. And so thank you all so much, it really, it was very impressive.
All right, Bob?
I have nothing.
Anything?
Just very briefly, as everyone knows, Friday is the Fourth of July, and just wanted to remind everyone about the wonderful concert at Devondorf Park at two o'clock, the Pops Concert, so hope you can all make it to that, it's a lot of fun, thank you.
All right, so, I guess it's my turn, right? Jeff, do you want to go? You haven't changed your mind, okay. It's an exciting day today, as this, we not only have a full council agenda, to say the least, with items that can move important projects forward, but it's also the first day of the new fiscal year, right? And that means we can move forward with many projects, equipment purchases, take other actions that were approved with last year's budget. And I'd like to thank the council for the incredible job that they all did on the budget. I, I think it's, it's going to be an exciting year for the city. I also look back on our first six months of the council activities, and, and, and we see much that we've accomplished, but we've got a lot of things on our agenda to do before the end of the year, so I want to thank all the council members for the incredible efforts that they put forward, because not only do they do the work here, but they're on boards, and it, and I'm finding out, because it's new to me, that it takes more time than you think to run a company like Regen, in my case, Tamsi, MST, Ambag, and other things that we all do, so thank you so much. On the fun side of things, I'm not, I'm not sure how many of you have heard of Dave Marzetti, KMBY. He does a show on Saturday called Shag Bag, and he does it out at Del Monte Golf Course, and I've been on that show once. And he has invited me to, every month, Sunday morning at ten-thirty, he does a show at Little Napoli in the window, you can go and watch it, and go inside, and, and I have a show at ten-thirty for five minutes every Sunday, and I just talk about Carmel things, and he asks me a couple of questions, and then I leave. It's just in and out in five minutes. So this next Sunday, you might want to listen in on KMBY. Margaret's going to, my wife is going to be talking about Carmel Cares' fifth anniversary gathering that's going to be held at Forest Theater from two to five on Sunday, July thirteenth. So give her a listen, it should be a lot of fun, she's never seen how this works. So that's all I have today. All right, we'll now move on to orders of business. These are items that require a council debate, direction, or action. Item number one is a Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash oh-six-two ratifying an appointment to the Harrison Memorial Library Board of Trustees. This is estimated at fifteen minutes, hopefully we can make it quicker. We currently have two openings on the Harrison Memorial Library Board of Trustees. Today, we're requesting the ratification of a highly qualified candidate named Billy Farina. His and all other applications for this position were in the agenda packet. Following interviews with every applicant, Mayor Protem Delves and I selected Billy Farina to be a trustee during this important time for the library. As shown in his application, Billy has a strong track record of professional accomplishments, and he and his wife Susan have always been involved in volunteering in communities where they've lived. Currently, this includes being a docent at Tor House and a couple other volunteer activities in town. Billy, who lives just outside city limits on Carmel Point, will be replacing a former trustee who also lived outside city limits. Are there any questions from the council? No questions? Any comments from the public? Right now. Here, I'll explain that a little bit. So recently, like within the last week, we, in the last two weeks, we heard that another trustee was, was leaving for personal reasons, and so we have announced, and there's a process we have to go through, it takes at least a couple of weeks. So we've announced it, we have at least one, I haven't received an update the last day or two, but we have one qualified candidate, and after the time period has gone by, we will interview that person or whoever else out there, and also evaluate all the other candidates that we had from the last time, and we will select that person, and we hope that with the timing right, we could, we could appoint them at the August meeting. We'll see. That's the background on that, so sorry I didn't bring that up. I was going to say that at the end, after the vote, but now you know. All right, we have a comment.
Yeah, thank you. Hello, Mayor, council, staff, residents? Bobby Richards, and I am here tonight to speak for the Carmel Residents Association. Newest elected board member, I guess this is my initiation. So typically, I don't read script, but I'm going to here since I am representing the association. The Carmel Resident Association feels strongly that our city commissions should primarily be composed of individuals. be composed of individuals who reside full-time in the city of Carmel by the Sea. These commissions play a vital role in shaping our community. We believe that those who live here pay property taxes that help fund commission programs and are directly impacted by the decision of council and commissions are best positioned to represent the unique needs and values of our village. We do recognize that on occasion, the mayor and vice mayor may recommend a non-resident applicant from the surrounding area. We understand this may be necessary when no qualified Carmel residents have applied, or when an individual brings highly specialized or knowledge that would uniquely benefit a specific commission. In those rare instances, we trust your judgment, but respectfully request that the specific qualifications or expertise justifying the recommendation be clearly described and explained to the public. That said, it has been a long, it has been, it has long been our tradition to prioritize full-time residents for these roles, and we believe it is important to uphold that principle. Our community is rich with experience and talent, and we are confident that many capable and passionate residents are ready and willing to serve. We are sincerely grateful to all who apply and volunteer their time. Regardless of the ZIP code, have a willingness and desire to volunteer is commendable. Their readiness to contribute deeply appreciate, we deeply appreciate. However, when qualified Carmel by the Sea residents step forward, we believe they should be given priority in these important appointments. Thank you for your time and for your continued commitment to preserving the character and integrity of our village. Respectfully, Carmel Residents Association. And I would, I have to just do this. Congratulations to Simeon Brown, a Carmel athlete that won Monterey County Athlete of the Year. Thank you.
We definitely missed your announcements, Bobby. Thank you, Bobby. All right, bring it back for anybody else in the, in the audience? All right, we'll bring it back for discussion. Anybody have a discussion point? All right, do we have a motion?
Try this again.
Yeah.
I move to approve for the appointment of Mr. Farina.
Second? I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Can I make a substitute motion?
You can.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this item until the next meeting, when we've had a chance to notice the second position. I think at the last meeting, you know, three of us expressed an interest in Mr. Kershner being reappointed, and so my motion is to continue the item until the next meeting, where we can vote on both candidates.
I'll second that. Is there any more discussion, or do I do the roll call?
I'll continue it. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other discussion items before we continue?
Well, Mayor, since there was a motion, I think there may be a need to vote on it, unless the maker of the motion...
The motion was to continue this.
Yes, it was.
Do you wanna vote on it?
And there was a second.
Okay, if you wanna vote, go ahead.
You either need a vote, or...
I'll have a discussion item that, I think we selected a qualified candidate, and I would like him to be approved tonight so that he can attend the next trustee meeting. There were three at the last meeting, it was a very positive meeting, and I think that we should move forward with the choice that we made.
Yeah, I mean, I'll say the same thing. It's, the way this works is that the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem interviewed all the candidates for all the boards, we had about twenty people that we interviewed, and we interviewed every one of them. As I said last week, I found that Mr. Farina was perhaps the most exceptional candidate that I interviewed. The library board is facing something different than they've faced perhaps ever, for at least for a very long time, since perhaps the last time it was remodeled or when it was built, with a project that we're gonna be talking about here in a few minutes, I hope. And that is the remodel, a significantly complex remodel of the building. Therefore, the specific skills that I was looking for in interviewing for that opening, or those openings, I was really looking for at least one candidate that has proven leadership experience, proven ability to manage complexity. And by that, I don't just mean complexity of the content involved in this project, but the complexity of the relationships. We've got a multifaceted thing, where we've got the city, we've got the Board of Trustees, we've got a, an architect, and we've got the foundation. And there are significant personalities on all of those, and having people that have the interpersonal flexibility to manage the tasks that are coming at us, I think, is hugely important. I looked for someone that was a critical thinker, and a problem solver, and a self-starter, and Mr. Farina had all those capabilities. My suggestion would be that we appoint him tonight, and that we have an opening that we will endeavor to fill in the next, to fill by August, but I think we're stringing along Mr. Farina, who's incredibly qualified candidate, and I don't think that's fair. To the point about that he has a different ZIP code than the rest of us, I'm sorry, the rules for filling these boards acknowledge, and particularly specifically for the library, they acknowledge that people in the sphere of influence are not just candidates in case we can't find somebody that lives in the correct ZIP code. What, it's recognizing the fact that the library is a regional asset, and something that is interesting and valuable to people who live in the sphere of influence, Carmel Woods and Carmel Point as well. So, I think it's incredibly unfair to string this along. You know, we've got another candidate opening, and, you know, we can come back to that in August, so.
And we will attempt to fill it with somebody who lives in Carmel by the Sea. In addition, a great deal of the support from the library financially comes from people that don't live here in Carmel by the Sea, as to piggyback on Bob's comment. So, I think we found the right person. I'm quite frankly surprised that this is happening again, and I think that we should appoint Billy Farina tonight, so that we have one more person to attend the next meeting, and then we'll find another qualified candidate for next month. Tell us process, I'm new to this.
It's just on Hans to see if he wants to keep his motion, otherwise we've voted it, right?
Well, the motion's on the floor, so. And there's been a second.
Yeah, no, I'd like to keep the motion. You know, as I said last time, I think John Kershner, as a thirty-one-year resident, he's been incredibly committed to the library. As I mentioned the last time, I've literally gone into the kids' library and seen him, and been like, "John, what are you reading?" "I'm reading all the board minutes of the Library Foundation back to, you know, nineteen thirty," right? So, he's, he's in it, he, he's been very committed. There was a lot of pressure put on John, and John exercised, he really demonstrated a lot of backbone, and I think as a result of that, the city wound up with a much better agreement that's gonna put us in a position to be successful and to make this project successful. And I wanna support him for doing that. I don't think, you know, I think it's very important that our, that members of our boards and commissions have the room and the space and the ability to exercise independent judgment without undue pressure from the council, and I wanna stand up for that principle, so. I stand by my motion.
So, there's three, I think there's three of you that wanna reappoint Mr. Kershner. Why not?
We haven't, we haven't nominated him.
We have not nominated him.
It has to start with us.
I guess we can.
I just wanna echo Hans's comments, I completely agree, you're not gonna find somebody that cares more about the library and is willing to put in the time and the effort. And we should value people who are free thinkers and independent thinkers. We don't want somebody that's just to be a puppet on these commissions and boards, so I would like to see us continue this, and next time around, when we've got the two openings, I'd like to see Mr. Farina on one of them, and I'd like to see John Kershner in the second one.
Your roll call? The roll call is for continuance.
All right. Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Delves?
Yes.
Councilmember Dramoff?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next month, we'll come back with two appointments. Item two is a Resolution 2025-063 Professional Services Agreement with Moore, Ruble, Udell Architects for the Centennial Restoration of the Harrison Memorial Library. Brian, could you take us through a brief review of the contract process and document?
Certainly. I'm very pleased to present this item to you tonight on this very important project for the Harrison Memorial Library. Initially, I wanna acknowledge the very significant efforts by Marcy and Alexandra from the foundation, and their attorney, Brian Call, as well as Buzz Udell and Christopher Hamilton from his office, and their attorney, Tom Jansen. We've spent significant amount of time over the last few months drafting this agreement, and it's being presented to you tonight for your consideration. So, if we can start the PowerPoint, please.
Reese, can you show the presentation in the chambers? On the projector?
Are we gonna see it on our screens?
I'm sorry?
Okay.
Did you give your power back?
Next slide, or this one?
Well, my screen is blank, I mean, I can turn my head. Looks like we have it now? All right. All right, so I'll begin. The foundation will fund the Harrison Memorial Centennial Restoration Project to upgrade primarily the interior of this historic facility in the manner as you see described in this slide. The project costs are estimated to be in the range of fifteen to twenty million dollars. Next slide, please. So there would be three contracts necessary for the project, they're all listed here, as you can see on the screen. The first contract is between the city and the foundation, that was recommended by the library board and approved by the council. The second contract is the one that we're considering tonight, and that is with the architects. We abbreviate them as, well, it's Moore, Ruble, and Udell, and we call them by their initials of MRY from time to time. And then, a third contract, which you have not yet seen, is a contract between the city and the construction contractor. That will come at a future date after the architect has prepared their plans and specifications, which will then be prepared for a bid that will go out for our construction contractor. Next slide, please. So, the request or proposal, or the RFP for the Architectural Services was issued in August of 2024. There were six proposals received. Those proposals were thoroughly reviewed by, reviewed by the nineteen-member Architectural Selection Committee, who had backgrounds in architecture, interior design, and local history. And after a final review of the two finalists, the committee unanimously recommended that the city council approve entering into negotiations with the MRY firm. Next slide, please. MRY has extensive experience with historic renovations and designing libraries, and we have received from Buzz Udell, who's in the audience tonight, and this letter is attachment two to the staff report, and in that letter, it notes that MRY's expertise includes some twenty library projects, as well as scores of civic and cultural products, projects. Also, Mr. Udell notes in his letter that, as the role of libraries in communities evolves, civic, cultural, and educational programs increasingly inform libraries as the centers of community life and learning. Next slide, please. So, the proposed professional agreement with MRY is attachment three to the staff report. It includes terms under which MRY will provide the scope of services, those are described in Section 1A, and I'm not gonna read from the slide, you can all see what it says, but as you will note, that there's a substantial work effort that's gonna be required by the architect in connection with this project. Next slide. So, the foundation will be funding the cost of the services by MRY, and there's going to be three phases, those are all listed in this slide. The first phase is for the cost of schematics and conceptual design, as well as community engagement. Phase two is the design, development, and other work you see on this slide, and phase three would be support and consultation during the construction portion of the project. Next slide. The fixed fees for each of the phases will not exceed the amounts you see listed here for phases one, two, and three, they total approximately two-point-two million dollars. And in addition to the fixed fee, MRY is going to be entitled to compensation for what is referred to as supplemental and optional services that are pre-approved in Exhibit C to the agreement. And then, there would also be compensation for additional services, if any, in the manner that's described in the agreement. Next slide. At its meeting on June 24th of 2025, the Harrison Memorial Library Board of Trustees reviewed the proposed agreement with MRY and recommended that the city council approve the agreement. Next slide. So, the recommended action is a motion to adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Carmel by the Sea, authorizing the city administrator to execute a professional services agreement with the MRY firm for the centennial restoration of the Harrison Memorial Library. I do need to add that it has come to my attention that there is a reference in one of the exhibits, the proposal from MRY, that had a schedule in it with a start date of January of 2025, and since we are in July of 2025, it will be necessary to revise that schedule in order to recognize the calendar, if you will, to have a start date of July of 2025 rather than January. And that change to the schedule will result in an end date for the work, projected end date, that would, projected into the spring, approximately the spring of 2029, that would be a projected date. The actual completion date would not be known until the project is completed, of course, and that could depend upon the amount of time it takes for the architect to complete their work and for the construction contractor to complete their work. So, the addition to the recommendation that you see on the screen would be to add to this the words, after it says Harrison Memorial Library, "Subject to the submission to the city of Exhibit D project schedule." So, the request is that the architect provide to the city a revised schedule, that project schedule that would reflect the start date of July of 2025 rather than January of 2025. And the only other change that would be necessary would be to Section 3C of the agreement, which appears at page ten, and that first sentence would read, "Services must be completed by consultant in accordance with the project schedule set forth in Exhibit D." Previously, it referenced Exhibit B. So, that is the end of my presentation. I'm prepared to answer questions from the council, if you have any.
Or we have questions. Can you tell us the process by which those changes are gonna be made, and the timing of such?
Well, I...
And how that affects our voting right now?
What I would ask is, first of all, what I would recommend is that we call Brian Call to the podium, and Buzz, and later, after him, Buzz Udell, to make sure that the foundation and the architect are agreeable to these proposed changes. So, if we can do that...
Should we do that right now?
Yeah, I would suggest we do that now. So, Brian, could you step forward?
I'll call by the mayor.
Brian, could you come forward?
Thank you.
How's that?
Thank you. I have reviewed those proposed changes as legal counsel to the foundation, and I have reviewed them with the city attorney, and those changes are acceptable to the foundation.
All right. Thank you. Buzz, can you represent your firm? Welcome, Buzz.
Thank you.
It's good to have you here.
Good to see you, Mayor Byrne and members of the council. So, we would also be agreeable to the changes. I know just in the last few hours, there've been conversations with the two Bryans, Chris Hamilton, our office, and our attorney, that it's all agreeable. I think it's not that unusual sometimes for, during the course of project mobilization, you have a starting date that was established in response to the RFP, and then that's shifted. So, I think it's a relatively straightforward adjustment.
Yes. All right. So, all three parties are in agreement. So, your suggestion is that the resolution that we are going to vote on... So your suggestion is that the resolution that we are going to vote on when we're finished with this process would say the actual agreement will be subject to those changes being made, the contract being approved by all three parties, and then the resolution would be signed by me and Chip would then sign the contract after it's been modified, correct?
Yes, and so there's no doubt on this. Can we get that last slide back up, the one on the motion? Just go to the end. All right, then. So to answer your question, Mayor, the words that would be added to the slide that you see would be "subject to the submission to the city of exhibit D project schedule."
All right. And the changing in the contract of referencing D instead of B?
Yes, it says the change to section three C that I mentioned.
Okay, all right. Good. Thank you. Before we start, questions from the council. I'd like to thank councilperson Barron for pointing this out. As usual, he digs deep into everything, and he made some phone calls and pointed this out. So thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Any questions from the council regarding the contract itself?
Sure.
I'll go first.
Go.
I have some questions. Thank you. Thank you. Can I call you Buzz for coming? I have some questions for you.
Sure.
Yeah. Come up here.
Come on up, Buzz.
So thank you for, thank you for all the work, not only that you've done outside of the city, but all the work that you're going to do from us. I know I'm pretty excited, and I think I speak for everybody, that we're all really excited to start this project. Let's see, I'll just go down my list. First one is easy. What is a page turn review meeting?
I'm sorry.
What is a page turn review meeting?
Page turn, it's actually a sort of informal term, which at certain points in the process, let's say fifty percent of construction documents or certain key milestones, it's very helpful to have all the key players in the room from different disciplines, so sort of structural, mechanical, historical, city, foundation. And then we literally walk through every page of the documents at that point to really vet them, make sure there's a clear understanding, because there's a lot of technical information. We find that it's a way to sort of minimize surprises later, and you want the contractor deeply involved in that.
Okay. Thank you. So one of the things that we talked about a number of months ago was the sort of historical nature of the building. I have a couple of questions about that. And up here, we, you know, we sort of hashed out sort of the adherence of the library project to the city. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. The adherence of the library project itself to like the city's codes. And we talked about possible meetings, sort of meetings that are required by our city code of the H R B and the planning commission.
Yeah.
And I noticed in your schedule that you, that the schedule calls out, sorry, I don't mean to say you, the schedule calls out meetings with the library board. And I wonder if your schedule includes meetings with the, you know, the meetings that may come up with the planning commission and the H R B as well, sort of as needed.
Yeah, we have, essentially, we've aligned meetings with city agencies. So H R B, planning commission, city council, and the others that are, you know, critical fire marshals, to happen on the kind of workshop days or multiple days when we come up and have a series of meetings. So that alignment, I think, is going to be important to coordinate.
And so those meetings are part of your, like, the way you would work this project?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're really important.
Okay. The second question is sort of related, is sort of related to that. And one of the things I noticed in the schedule, I have a couple of questions about the schedule, the, I guess this is the, I don't know, whether it's the schedule or the timeline, is that the first phase, validation and engagement, is pretty short at twelve weeks. And one of the things that we, you know, we're currently in year six of trying to plan a police building, which you're going to hear about later, and I'm going, well, you may not hear about it, but we are. I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about how you hope to do like all that public engagement in those twelve weeks. That seems aggressive for-
Yeah.
For us.
It is aggressive. And we had quite a few conversations, both with the foundation and city representatives, that we think because of the kind of volatile situation in costs and supply chains and even the sort of geopolitics that affect contractors in construction, that we need to move as rapidly as we can, because I don't have the numbers, but I did some back of the envelope, and it's kind of, can be sort of shocking how much a month can cost in an escalatory period. So that sort of set the stage for trying to move kind of with dispatch, if you will. And having said that, I think there's several factors that make it viable. One, that the city and the foundation have done a lot of very good due diligence with various studies that identify key issues that have to do with, say, accessibility, some seismic issues, some preliminary historic, although we have to do a lot more. So there's, I think, a very important groundwork that happens. There's also been expressed, you know, a keen desire to really just move fast, organize meetings way ahead of time. One thing we'd like to do is try to set up a schedule that's as close to a year ahead as we can, so that we're getting all the key players aligned, and we'll come up for, a lot of our workshops will be here for multiple days, and we'll have meetings, breakouts, get back together, try to solve problems, you know, within these windows of workshops. So there's sort of the background, there's the imperatives of the cost, there's the interest and motivation of the players to move fairly fast. So I would say it is aggressive. We also feel that what helps a lot is having all the key consultants in the room at the very beginning. So you're not, just for example, you're not waiting until you have three different ideas about how to reinforce the structure before you have your mechanical and your electrical and your various systems, because everything interacts. This is kind of like a surgical intervention. You want everybody in the room. So does that help answer your-
Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty good answer. I'm still, you know, I'm concerned, you know, I'm reminded of the sort of the old saying about projects, you can have speeds, you know, you can have speed, cost, and scope, but you can't have all of them.
Yeah.
And, and so I'm not sure that I necessarily, you know, I'm not sure that if I had been in that room when you were, like, had those discussions, whether I would have made the same discussion, whether I would have made exactly the same decision. You know, I'm still concerned about sort of the, it looks like on my little piece of paper, it looks like a three-month period to do all that stuff. You know, you talked about setting up all these meetings-
Yeah.
-far in advance, and we're like, the contract's going to start tomorrow, and as far as I know, I'm sure the meetings have not been set up yet. So we're already not far in advance.
Yeah.
And these are meetings, I think, that involve our constituents, involve our constituents.
Yep.
And it's summer, and people go away on vacation and all that. So I'm still, you know, I'm a little concerned about it. I think, you know, I don't, I don't really have an answer, I don't really have an answer for my concerns, other than that, you know, I would hate to get to, you know, phase two and have made a bad, you know, discover something, made a bad decision, because, and I'll just use her, because she's saying right here, Andy Carr comes in and says she doesn't like the color of the paint on the wall, or whatever it is, whatever it is that happens. I would hate to see us backtracking, because we were skipping with our time.
Ways to address that is to set up a sort of critical path system where, you know, certain decisions can really weigh the color, you know, the certain, the details of certain things, and really identify the sort of enabling decisions, you know, what are the drivers? And then it really is trying to find that sweet spot of working with dispatch, but not, but being very kind of responsible to it. And, you know, we would certainly, if for some reason there are logistics that make that trickier, we're waiting for some really key thing, you know, we can sort of work with some adjustments, I'm sure.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess the final thing, as I'd rather start aggressively, we're meeting, a number of us are starting to meet tomorrow. I'd rather start aggressively than, you know, too relaxed, you know, just given the, if we weren't in such a volatile inflationary period, we might have added a month or two.
Okay. And one, one last question. The proposal, you know, sort of the document that you submitted, talked a lot about sort of the lead certification.
Yes.
And, and, you know, your, your proposal had pictures of sort of other buildings that you have sort of worked on. And I wonder, you know, I would imagine that sometimes lead certifications come into conflict with the like historicity of the building.
Yeah.
And I was wondering if you could talk about like how you think about that, you know, what like, what is the, what is the lead goal? Like, right now, as we stand here, is it like a lead silver or is it a lead gold or a lead, like, do we have a goal? Or how do we think about like navigating the lead waters, which are important-
Yeah.
-while considering the historicity of the building?
I mean, I would, I'm probably going to answer this slightly differently than I would have five years ago. I think it's premature to have a target, because the target can be arbitrary. A lot, we work a lot with universities and public sector, state department, et cetera. A lot of them have sort of backed off having, you know, precise targets. Like, a few years ago, it's like everything's going to be platinum, everything. Now the question is, how can you be most environmentally responsible while meeting the other goals? So historical sensitivity, historical legacy, for example, accessibility, seismic upgrading, you want to really, so if you have all these converging goals, you want to find the kind of optimization of that. So we will, the other thing I would say is we try to make every design decision or technical decision count for more than one solution. So to the extent that you can do things that advance the environmental goals, but also make a better experience, for example. You know, lighting is a big one. If you go in that library, the existing lighting really sort of kills a lot of the architecture. And you can get, you know, you can push the lead component of that quite far. So it's that sort of balancing different dials. We wouldn't go after everything equally, I guess.
So thank you.
Jeff, if you could keep your questions to the contract, we're getting a little off track here.
Sorry.
You can spend time with Buzz outside the meeting.
Okay.
It's all interesting stuff, though I like hearing it, but we need to move along.
Yeah, stop me if I'm getting too technical.
Yeah. We're talking contract.
Okay. I'd be interested in tracking that.
The lead, yeah.
The environmental stuff as we go on.
By the way, we start that on day one as something we're tracking with all of our consultants.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody have a question to Buzz, I guess, while he's standing up here?
Yeah, just to build on Jeff's question, could you just sort of-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, I obviously saw the Gantt chart. First of all, I'm excited to have you on this project. I think it's great that we have a local homeowner.
Yeah.
Can you just describe, can you sort of paint it?
I was thinking that would be a good idea.
Welcome. Could you sort of paint a picture for the community of what you envision the community engagement to look like over that twelve weeks, sort of the, you know, the charrettes, et cetera, sort of?
I'll say a little bit about it. I'm going to say a little bit more in my, you know, if I have some-
He's got a presentation he's going to do after this, which would be a better way to do that.
Oh, I didn't know that.
It's after, it's after you vote, but-
But just-
He will cover-
So I'll just say at a high level on that, that the, we know, the outreach, you know, it's a very engaged community, which is great. It's a very supportive community. The outreach is extremely important in terms of taking the pulse of the whole community in terms of aspirations. We're really saying, what, how do we prepare for another next hundred years? So we will be working with the foundation and the board and the city to set up essentially multiple channels. There'll be sort of big open outreach, which are kind of, everybody's invited with an advance notice. There'll be kind of, I would say, leadership, and we're going to be starting tomorrow to identify, you know, what are some of the key constituencies, and how do we have a smaller group representing those leaders? There may be informal things, like being at a farmer's market with just a booth. There could be web, I would say, who may want to address this, there could be, you know, a website, and then, well, I'm not even sure we need a separate website, because the library has such a good digital outreach. So it's sort of multi modes and multi channels, and, you know, as robust as we can make it and also make it fun. So it's really, part of that is building community connections, not just the input to the library.
I have no questions on the contrary.
I don't either. Any other questions before we go to the public? All right. Seeing none. We're open for public comment on the contract itself, not the process of what we're going to do after it's signed. We'll have plenty of time for that. No public comments? Anybody online? Nothing online? We'll bring it back for discussion. Do you have any discussion?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. Just very, very briefly. I was very impressed with the resume of this architectural firm and the work that they've done, especially with other historic libraries in the state and elsewhere. I thought the UCLA campus work that they did was just absolutely stunning, so I'm really happy with this firm, and I think it's a good choice.
Mayor, could I interrupt for just a minute?
Okay.
If there's going to be more presentation that's going to be going on, my advice would be that it come before you vote on the contract.
Okay. That's, so go ahead. Let's do it. Buzz, go ahead and give your presentation. It's not really about the contract, but if, if the legal advice is to do it, go ahead and do it. You know, but the way this process has worked, Buzz really, we were going to have him present at the last contract, and it was decided by the group that we wouldn't do that. So Buzz has really never had a chance to, for anybody to see him before, so I felt that it was important, at least for all of us, to see him before we actually start the project. But go ahead and do your presentation.
And this is-
Just so you know the process, and then, and then I think we have a public comment for Marcy and a public comment from, from Alexandra, if they want to do one. Go ahead.
So this will be quite brief, really just to give a brief introduction to our firm, as well as a few thoughts about why this is such an extraordinary project. So I'm Buzz Udell. I'm one of the founding partners of Moore, Ruble, Udell. And our whole team is extraordinarily enthusiastic about the opportunities for this to be a project that builds on the energy and importance and cultural richness that is already taking place within the library. It's not only an important historic building regionally, nationally, but it has, I think, an outsized influence within the community. Just comparing it to other public libraries, you know, the aspirations of programs, whether they're music, whether they're civic dialogue, whether they're training, teaching, continuing education, all combined to really make this a cultural center, a community center, and library in the sort of fullest sense of the word. a library in the sort of fullest sense of, of the word. A question came up about a collaborative approach. We really feel that the best architecture comes out of a process of sort of listening, dialogue, outreach, highly collaborative. We want to really hear the full range of thoughts, aspirations. Very early on, we're, we're going to front load the community involvement so that it really informs the early planning and the early decisions. So that will be very intense in, in the first few weeks. And as I mentioned, it will work on multiple modes, so if people can't be there in person, they might be, they'll be able to sort of use online communication. One of the, there are multiple personal reasons why I find this project extremely important. I've, I've been coming to Carmel for quite a few decades, partly because of having a group of very dear friends that are really like family, which led to my wife Tina Beebe, who's a painter, and I starting to, to look for a, a place to, to live, starting in the mid 2000s. And since 2010, we've had a, a house here. Not in the zip code, we're on the point, but we always feel Carmel is, is sort of unified. And it's a place we, we love and want to spend a great deal of time. One of the things I think that's unique is this, from literally the founding of the city, is this extraordinary legacy of the arts, which are, interestingly, they're both visual and literary. And that's, for, for a community this size, it's really an extraordinary legacy which continues to this day. And on a personal level, I, when I'm here, as much as I can, I sort of explore the environment, the mountains, the, the ocean, the valleys through sketching and painting. And I'm just a Sunday sketcher painter. My wife is, is a serious painter who spends a lot of time. So that's another level on which we feel the sort of connection between the landscape and the town is extremely unusual. One of the things that, it, it's hard to really think of other places that have this. If you look at the, the slide on the left of the, the town plan, if you will, of just Carmel by the Sea, it's a very compact, as you know, very pedestrian oriented, in all the best ways, that still has an extremely rich array of amenities, support, whether it's cultural, entertainment, restaurant, social, all in this place that you can sort of feel connected to and identify. And that in turn is set in a literally awesome landscape that is, you know, a regional landscape that's very diverse. And then the red dot is the library. It's literally at the kind of, what a real estate person might call the 100% corner. And so it's at the heart of this great village that's complemented by this extraordinary natural landscape. And one of the things that we find interesting is the Harrison Memorial Library, going back to its origins, there's, there's actually writing about the importance of the building in the landscape. And I know there's been a lot of people in the community, we have friends who've worked on restorations and upgrades of the landscape, but as we work on the legacy of the building and respecting its history, we'll also be thinking about its relation to the landscape. And even though most of the work will be interior, that connection to the site and the city is one of the special characteristics. In terms of our experience, as was mentioned, we have, you know, several decades of working on very important historical buildings, from some in Europe that are several hundred years old, to quite a few in California that are almost exactly the same age as the Harrison Library. Different scales, public, private, academic. And as was mentioned, we're, fortuitously, we're just finishing a really successful restoration, seismic upgrading, life safety improvement, very ambitious, complicated project at the Historic Pell Library, which is the central college library at UCLA. A lot of the challenges in this were highly technical and some of the major spaces, like the reading room, you see there, was actually kept open. We're not sure we can do this here because it's a much, you know, finer grain, smaller building, but while this highly technical work that involved x-rays and literally like arthroscopic surgery, we were able to keep lots of the building open. And then we have well over 20 libraries, both in California and internationally, again at, at different scales. So we've been able to work with different philosophies, different kinds of constituent groups, owners, users, communities. So just in closing, going forward, we're really thrilled to be able to bring these kind of converging experiences to a, a truly amazing and unique building that is really, in many ways, a cult, the cultural center, or one of several cultural centers in an extraordinary part of the world that's known locally and, and globally. And the idea of sort of this being the centennial and preparing for another 100 years is, is, you know, very exciting and motivating. We'll look forward to working with all of you and the greater community.
All right, thank you Buzz.
Go back to.
Marcy and Alex, do you want to make a comment at this point?
So Mayor Byrne and members of the City Council, on behalf of the Carmel Public Library Foundation, I want to thank you for considering this contract and hopefully approving it with Moore Ruble Udell to lead the restoration of the Harrison Memorial Library. After nearly 100 years of loyal service, we know that the building could use a little tender loving care. And this is a big step forward for one of Carmel's most beloved institutions. This project is more than a renovation, it's our promise to preserve the soul of the library, the character, the stories, the history, while equipping it for the next century of ideas, learning, and imagination. We are deeply committed to making this a collaborative process. As the restoration moves forward, we will ensure that the community is engaged and every step of the way through updates, public input, opportunities, and celebrations that reflect the library's role as a gathering place for everyone. Thank you for helping us keep the library not just open, but truly alive, relevant, thriving, and ready for the next 100 years.
Thank you, Marcy.
Good evening, City Council, City Administrator, and Mayor. Thanks to the extraordinary generosity of our donors, we have already been able to raise $8.8 million towards this project. We have a remarkable opportunity here to restore, rejuvenate, and elevate our beloved library so it can flourish for another 100 years. We're honored to collaborate with the renowned architectural firm of Moore Ruble and Udell, whose expertise, respect for history, and deep connection to our community promise a truly exceptional result. In advance of hopefully your approval, I would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to you, to the mayor, to the City Council, to Moore Ruble Udell, our incredibly generous donors, our wider community, our dedicated librarians. Together, we will ensure that our cherished library remains open, relevant, and thriving for generations to come. And a little plug, if you are interested in supporting this project, please contact me at carmelpubliclibraryfoundation.org. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Ashley, would you like to make a comment?
Mayor, thank you for inviting me up this evening. The mayor and I have been talking a lot about community engagement, and I appreciate, I've seen Buzz's slides a couple times now, and I'm so thrilled to be working with this firm. I especially love the picture of the charrette. I imagine something like that happening in the reading room. And one I wanted to talk about this evening is, you know, with any renovation comes that dreaded word, change. And I can tell you, I've had many conversations individually with our library patrons when I'm over at the Harrison, who ask me, I heard about this project, what is happening? I'm concerned, I don't want anything to change, what does this mean? You know, we're going to be opening up walls and digging around to improve our infrastructure to ensure that next 100 years of the library, and that with that comes opportunities for the 21st century, which we're now a quarter of the way into. So with some of that anxiety, I see an opportunity for gentle enhancements, for a subtle evolution, not a revolution, just changes that we need, but that the key here with those changes will be to engage the community, as Buzz talked about, as Alex and Marcy spoke about, the actual users of our library, the people who are in those seats reading the newspaper, that are on their regular schedule picking up the holds, that are participating in our programs and, you know, stalking through the stacks on a foggy day. They use the library, and the library staff knows how they use the library, and those are going to be critical voices in this project. And their voices, I see their voices guiding this process from that first sketch to the final approval. And there's going to be some disagreements about paint colors maybe, but the bigger picture things, we will all work to come to terms on. And hopefully by the end of this project, the people that are using the library will see this as a success in that it feels like home to them, that they, their needs have been recognized, their habits have been understood, and that they have had a chance to shape what comes next in the future of our library. And that this is not just a project that was done to the community, but something that was built with the community and with our patrons. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that process, looking forward to continuing the engagement with our patrons beyond just charrette. So I know those are big things we talked about that are in the contract, but the library staff are your boots on the ground. We can do, we can start doing surveys now, we can start, we do across the desk conversations with our patrons that we have, just a little diary notebook that we keep track of. So there's all kinds of opportunities outside of bigger community gatherings to get community input that can be included as a part of this process. So thank you all for the opportunity to speak this evening on the project.
Well said, and certainly knowing you and how you work and your skills, you're going to be a significant help to the process as we gather the specs. And it sounds like you've already started, actually.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to bring it back for discussion. Anybody have anything to say?
Yeah, I'll go.
Go ahead.
There's more public comment on my end.
Oh, we've, somebody popped up?
There's, there's no hands raised on Zoom.
I mean, we, we actually had closed, public comment was actually over, that was supposed to be after, but we got advised. Do you, do you see anybody with their hand up?
There's no, there's no hands raised.
Okay, all right, go ahead Bob.
All right, so keeping my comments to the contract, because that's really why we're here, not to try and pre-manage the project. Like others, we, we all dug pretty deeply into the, so let's, the, the background again. We, we have a contract, as stated before, between the city and the foundation. It is a complicated contract for the foundation to raise money and pay the bills on a building that is owned by the city, right? And I think that contract, it took some effort, but I think the outcome was excellent. So now we have a second contract, which is between the city and the architect. And interestingly, there is no contract between the foundation and the architect. So all of this drives through the city, which is appropriate because the city owns the building. But, you know, that's a lot of moving parts, and then when we're going to add a contractor on top of that, that's a lot of complexity. So when I read the, this most recent contract between the city and MRI, I, my emphasis, my, my focus was first on understanding it and make sure it kind of stands on its own, but also kind of doing a cross-reference to the previous contract between us and the foundation, because it's possible you get two documents that say two very different things, and that's the kiss of death for, for something of this complexity. So my congratulations to all the attorneys involved and the people behind the attorneys. I really couldn't find a conflict between the two documents, and to the contrary, they, they celebrate each other, and, and particularly getting, getting deep enough, you know, not just into the scope of service and how people get paid, but also what the key decision points are. And both documents recognize the same set of key decision points. The one thing that I'll point out is that the contract between the city and the foundation essentially says the foundation can create whatever board committee it wants to make decisions for the foundation. The city, the document calls out for us to establish an ad hoc committee of two of us up here to lead a, to, to lead that effort and be the voice for the city on that. And that, that is not necessarily memorialized in the contract with MRI, but I think because it's in the other one, it's fine, and, and doesn't need to be. The only thing I would then say to us is, it seems like, you know, this is the official go, and you're ready to go, and we better get our ducks in a row pretty quick in terms of putting our group together to make sure that we, that we, the city, aren't slowing anything down as we go. So, and, but I, I'm excited about this, I think the contract works, and I'm ready to approve it.
Thank you.
Hmm? Sure, I'll make a motion, recognizing my colleagues may still have comments, to authorize the city administrator to execute a professional services agreement with Moore Ruble Udell Architects for the Centennial Restoration of the Harrison Memorial Library, subject to submission to the city of Exhibit D project schedule. Brian, you like that?
That was perfect.
Wow.
All right, any other discussion before we get a second? Do you have a second?
I seconded.
I see a hand in the audience, Mayor.
Yeah, well, let's continue this process.
Pardon me?
Let's continue this process.
Public comment is closed.
I believe it's closed.
It, it may be, but it's, it's your discretion, Shane, you want to recognize.
Do we have a second?
I just seconded it.
Okay, second, all right. Cindy, what do you have to say?
She'll need to come to the mic.
Come up, come up. It's better if you, if you do this in order, but since I know you, and I know you say good things, go ahead.
Mayor Byrne, we're the council city staff, my name's Cindy Lloyd. I'm sorry to be able to interrupt, but it wasn't clear to me. It was not clear to me that the public comment was open to the public. I know that you were going to recognize other people after Mr. Udell, but there were a couple of us.
Okay, I, if, that's fine, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Since I've done my identification part, I'll go on. Having heard fine words of praise from my respected architectural friends, from Buzz Udell and his team, I was assured that the interior renovation project of our treasured Harrison Memorial Library is in good hands. Both Robin Eschelman and Douglas Schmitz carried out extensive research, providing documentation that substantiates the fact that our local builder, Michael J. Murphy, both designed and built the Harrison Memorial Library, with input from the notable San Francisco architect Bernard Maybeck. It is with gratitude that the subject of who designed the library has been settled, as documented in the Moore Ruble Udell report. I quote, "The Harrison Memorial Library has been a landmark since 1928. It was designed and built by M.J. Murphy in collaboration with Bernard Maybeck," end quote. May I ask that the Historic Resources Board be added to the list of those reviewing the plans, in addition to opportunities for public comments at frequent intervals during the design process? Those of us who grew up with the Harrison Memorial Library carry deeply that the interior renovation... renovation began historic restoration, reflecting the work of both Murphy and Maybeck when they created our library. We students from Sunset School, led by our teachers, walked two by two, hand in hand, from school to the library, fostering a deep appreciation for and love of the library. It represented stability as we walked up the chalk rock pathway and through the arch door into the repository of knowledge with capital K. With appreciation to the board, Library Board of Trustees, the Library Foundation, our city staff and city council, that an experienced architectural firm has been selected to care for what Murphy and Maybeck created. This native Carmelite old timer is reassured and enthusiastic for the work to begin. Thank you, and thank you for opening it up.
Thank you, and, and I believe the, the subject of the HRB was covered in Hans's question, so thank you. Any others since, since we reopened it? Give out anybody else a chance? All right, come on up. We, we need to keep this moving. The time is flying. So the, the subject matter is the contract itself, not the process of the library necessarily. So do you have a question about the, the library contract?
No.
Okay, well, that's the subject that we're doing. We're, we're happy to accept your, your, your email or your comments about anything else other than the contract.
I have comments about the, and praise for the process and the firm that was selected to do the work.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Robin Eschleman, Pacific Grove, very interested party, representing the M.J. Murphy descendants. First, I'd like to commend the foundation for selecting Moore, Rubel, Udell, about whom I knew nothing until a few months ago. I read the draft document with concern until I read of the UCLA Powell Library renovation. Although much grander in scale and scope, it is of the same era as Harrison Memorial Library. I'd found the experience and commitment I sought. Reading further, tears welled. Finally, after the 35 years I've been aware of the misinformation and the almost 100 years of perpetuating and magnifying that misinformation, Carmel by the C has taken a step toward acknowledging the truth. There, near the top of the page, I quote, "It was designed and built by M.J. Murphy." Thank you. Reading on the glowing tribute to Maybeck, somewhat swallows Murphy's importance, the tears dry, it's easy to pay homage to the renowned Bernard Maybeck. Nevertheless, I persist. I return to the section on the design team. I learn that John Locasio is the historic architect for the project which, with credits that include the 2012 to 2014 Grand Central Air Terminal Rehabilitation Project in Glendale. I have history with that amazing project. My son, when he worked with Disney Corporate Real Estate, was the manager of design and delivery for the challenging and exciting restoration. The terminal project was Ryan's. I'm a preservationist. My son's participation in a major restoration, which adhered to the standards of the Secretary of the Interior, is one very proud memory for this mom. Ryan shared the experience with me. He had abundant praise for John Locasio and the architectural historian team then and now. I had the good fortune to visit the terminal when it was almost complete. Ryan explained accommodations made to meet the Secretary of the Interior standards, while at the same time satisfying ADA compliance codes. No easy task.
Could you, could you wrap this up, please? We, we really need to move this on.
One second.
I don't, I don't have a timer on here.
I know, but John Locasio.
Your time is up, thank you, thank you.
And accomplished.
We need to move on.
I applaud the Library Foundation.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I too did not hear that the public was included.
Okay, I'm, the sound, we, we're working on the sound, thank you. Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second, and any other discussion before we take a roll call? All right, Nova.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Delves?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarmov?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody, for your hard work on getting to that moment. Appreciate it. How about a round of applause? Beware, beware, now the hard work starts. All right, thank you. I'm going to give you a minute to clear out if you want, the library people. Thank you, everybody, for showing up tonight. We're going to take our break now while it's clearing, so what do you think? What do you think, Chip? Is it, is it dinner break or 15 minutes? Okay, we're going to take a 20-minute break, so we're going to come back at 6:45, or 7:45, going off.
Check one, two. 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 Okay, microphone check, one, two. Microphone check, one, two. One, two, one, two. Check one, two. I'm talking towards the microphone here. Check one, two. 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 Yeah, I can't rewire that real quick. I can bring up my phone downstairs, but it's a little too, little too much.
Yeah.
Downstairs, are we ready to resume the meeting?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, I told him already. This one, yeah.
Daniel, are we okay to resume the meeting?
Yes, we are.
Thanks.
All right, next item three. We'll receive a presentation by California American Water Company to introduce the Dolores Street Commercial Water Main Replacement Project and authorize issuance of an encroachment permit with special conditions of approval. Javier, it looks like you're gonna start this.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. So on situations like this, we'd like to bring encroachment, significant encroachment permits to council for, just so you can get an overview of the complexity and the magnitude of some of these projects. So CalAM actually constructed phase one of this project last year, and so now they're moving on to phase two, which is Dolores from Eighth to Ocean Avenue. This project is due to start later this year, and us as a city, we put together some conditions. I think there's a total of 62 that are already generated. But at this point, we bring you this project, we haven't yet approved or finalized the encroachment permit, so this is an opportunity for council and yourself to have comments, questions, concerns, voice them, and then we'll answer any, any, any of your concerns at the end of their presentation. So David is here from, Dave Pizzini is one of the engineers from CalAM, and he's here to present on, on this project.
All right, good evening. So as Javier mentioned, my name is David Pizzini. I'm with California American Water, gonna present on our water main replacement project. Okay, well, let's just ask you. Yep. So very quickly, just a glance of California American Water, the Monterey system. So we operate the peninsula from San City to Seaside, all the way down to Carmel Highlands and down Carmel Valley. And then we have some satellite systems, D'Arthuro, Ambler, Ralph Lane, Chular, and then all the way down to Garapata. We service 100,000 customers provided in our, in our service area. We manage 680 miles of pipeline in this system. In 2024, we replaced a little over 1,700 meters, and then we also replaced about 12,500 feet of water main in 2024 and had zero recordable safety incidents. Just to highlight, we've provided financial assistance and community support, as well as grants of 1.3 million in 2024. There we go. I know we saw this earlier, but to bring this up very quickly, our current water supplies that are feeding the Carmel area as well as Monterey Main System, Carmel River, we have 33.76 acre feet per year. Out of the seaside basin, we have 14.74, which is decreased by 700 acre feet once the desalination project is online. The San City desal plant, we have 94 acre feet. At ASR, it's not a drought resistant project, so it has a range of about 0 to 470 acre feet per year. And then pure water Monterey, 3,500 acre feet per year. So now onto the project. As I mentioned, we are proposing water main replacement projects on Dolores Street from Eighth Avenue to Ocean Avenue. We did replace phase one last year, which ran from Eighth Avenue to Santa Lucia. We broke this up between residential and kind of the commercial areas, just be the complexities of the two different areas. So, and this project, phase two would be just from Eighth to Ocean through the downtown area. Scope of the project, it's to replace the old four-inch water main with a new eight-inch PVC water main. It's a little over 900 feet in total. About 53 water services that would be replaced, as well as six new commercial fire services. New connections at the side streets, Eighth, Seventh, and then at Ocean. The project keeps safe distance, waterworks standard for drinking water from gas and sewer main, as well as any storm drains. The project, this area has concrete road, so we would be restoring the concrete roadway sections and the service laterals with the same concrete sections. Our designer was H2O Urban, they're a design firm that we, we hire for these projects. And then overall, it's just a project, again, to replace old infrastructure and increase the resiliency and reliability of the water system. Just a preliminary schedule, so we anticipated be about a four-month window for construction, starting October, early October. And then getting into, you know, the water main installation, service line installations, and then from there, we would test the line, as well as disinfect it. And then once it passes that testing, it's then ready to tie it in to the system and abandon the old system. And then once that's all completed, concrete and roadway, and then any sidewalk areas would be restored. And then striping and, and then final cleanup of the, of the system, or of the, the street. Obviously, it's a heavily trafficked area, so we did realize impacts and tried to work with Public Works to mitigate that. So we've come up with a traffic control plan that would provide one-way traffic would be provided during the work zone at all times. And generally, we would only be closing one block at a time, not the full section from Eighth to Ocean. During the, and then within the work hours of eight to five, no street parking during that, that work zone. We did, as part of our traffic control plan, to accommodate delivery vehicles, since this is obviously a lot more businesses rather than residents. So we've accommodated that in the work zone for any deliveries that may occur for the businesses. The sidewalks will be maintained for pedestrian traffic at all times, within, even within the work zone. The noise, there will be construction noise, but it will be maintained to those work hours that have been provided. There would be a small, limited shutdown times of the water main, and that would be when we do the crossovers between putting in the new system to the, from the old system. And we usually, it's no longer than an eight-hour window. It's actually usually shorter than that, but we do allow for an eight-hour window. And all residents or businesses are notified for eight hours in advance of any shutdowns that will occur. And then near Eighth, there is a hotel, and we realized that that was a drop-off area. So we've worked in our traffic control plan that we would move that to the street shoulder, to the driveway entrance, so that the hotel passenger drop-off will be safe for any, you know, tourists coming and patrons of that hotel. Some just coordination that will occur, so prior to the project starting, we will sending out notices with contact information to all the affected residents and businesses. So they'll have a 24/7 contact, not just for CalAM, but they'll have a twenty-four-seven contact, not just for Calam, but once the project starts, we'll also include the contractors' twenty-four-seven emergency contact. As part of that, we also have reached out to Chamber of Commerce, let them know about this project and this presentation, they're all aware, as well, we have reached out to the Carmel Residents Association and are looking to schedule a meeting with them, just so that they're aware of this project. As part of this being here today, just, we will comply with all the conditions, I know they're draft at the moment, but as the previous project, we complied with all the conditions that were set as part of that, and we will continue to do so. And here, obviously, presenting the project and requesting an encroachment permit from the city. So, with that, I'll open up for questions. We do have, Josh Stratton is here with External Affairs, so if there's questions more related towards Calam as a whole, or water supplies, I would defer to him. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Javier, do you have anything to add before we do questions? That's it? Okay, good, thank you, to both of you. Any questions from the council?
I've got one, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
About the limited water shutdowns, there are several restaurants in that stretch of Dolores, and an eight-hour shutdown would pretty much have a big impact on their business. Can you narrow it down, you said, or work on the hours that you would do that?
Yeah, we can work with them, and typically, again, it would be shutting down, well, we, it's usually an eight-thirty to four-thirty timeframe, which we let everybody know, so that way, they can start understanding that about eight-thirty, we'll start shutting the water off. And then, we usually, these tie-ins, because we prep it beforehand, so that it's not, we're not getting there the day of, and we don't know if it's not gonna shut down, so we can try to limit that with them. I know in the first phase, one of the shutdowns actually did affect a couple of the businesses in the commercial area, and we were diligent in coordinating with them, our onsite inspector coordinated with them to let them know immediately when it was back online. We can try to shorten that, it's just, we try to give a window, that way, if emergencies come up, you know, and it does go longer than four hours, say, that we're still trying to stay within that eight, so we can try to shorten that, but we do try to give ourselves and the contractor the ability to work within a timeframe that is reasonable.
Yes, and I would just encourage you to work with them and maybe pick a day or time that would be least of an impact, as far as, you know, tourists and visitors and that kind of thing.
And one thing that we did on the first phase, and we do for all of our projects, is, so, right, so this is spanning Eighth, and then there's Seventh in the middle, and then you have Ocean. What I suspect that we would do in this project is we would actually tie in at Seventh first, that way, we can keep one side open, and that way, then, we'll have, for a very short timeframe, maybe like a week, you'll have two water mains live. That way, we can start transferring everybody over, and then when we do the ends, we're actually not shutting people off.
Okay, thank you so much.
We do try to minimize that.
Got it.
Jeff? Hans? Bob? So, what you're saying is, it's probably best for the restaurant just to say, we're closed this Tuesday, instead of trying to figure out?
For lunch, they, that day, yeah, I would say for lunch, but again, we'll have water back on for the evening, dinnertime. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, yeah, we, again, we would give that notice if they, if they feel that's in their best interest to close.
But the worst case is, they just close on the Tuesday or whenever it is.
Right, yeah.
So, they don't have to worry about it.
That's, that brings up a point, we only do these shutdowns Tuesdays, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. We don't do them on Mondays or Fridays, just again, for emergency purposes.
It's not as big of a disaster for the restaurant, they get a day off. All right, looks like that's all the questions we have.
Okay.
So that means you did a good job.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public? Want to say something? Have a question? Concern? Guess you really did a good job. All right, anybody want to talk about this back here? All right, looks like we're finished, so.
I just wanted to say one thing.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The, you know, this, this stretch of Dolores between Ocean and at least Seventh is the stretch where the utility lines aren't deep enough, and so, we can't plant any trees in the tree wells, and so, I think a number of folks in the community know that, I just wanted you to know, we have these weekly meetings with Chip, and so, I did ask the question, like, is this an opportunity for us to address that problem at the same time? And one of the things that Chip mentioned was, you know, it's really a gas line on that, I guess it's the east side of Dolores with the utilities, and working with PG&E apparently is, what, not so much fun? Challenging.
Let's be nice here.
Apparently, trying to get that lined up with this timeline, you know, would be, would be difficult, so, anyway, that's a, that's a future goal of mine, at some point, to fix that issue with the utilities, but.
This is back to a question, I'm sorry for that, but have we, I know we've been kicking around, should we pave these roads or do the concrete, especially on Ocean Avenue? The cost difference is significant. Is, is this a case where, at the end of it, might be better to pave it? Because it's still rough, even if, it's gonna be even worse, actually.
Yeah, so we, we can't put asphalt over the broken concrete mayor, or all the cracks, and, you know, again, what, what our colleagues from Calam are gonna do is they're gonna cut a trench, and they're gonna fill the trench back in, they're not gonna repave the whole.
So we're gonna end up with a little bit rougher situation?
It'll be another, another utility cut.
So what you're saying, you have to take all the concrete out and just do a whole road mix?
Move and replace it, right, so those, because those cracks will telegraph through the asphalt.
Okay, never mind.
Can I, can I ask just one question on that? Because I had a similar question, which is, if we ever do decide to pull out the concrete, can you reassure me that that wouldn't necessitate going back and redoing the water?
Pardon me?
If, if we did decide to pull out the concrete at some point?
Yeah.
Would that, would we be able to just leave this, these water mains where they are?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can give me like one of these.
Four feet.
If you were, so our water main, our standard is three feet depth to the top of it, and if you were to come back and, you know, pull the concrete out and then pave over, no, you wouldn't have to redo the water, especially if it's a new water line, that's, it's got restrained joints, it's pretty, pretty durable, so it shouldn't, shouldn't have to be replaced.
Okay, and thank you once again for the beautiful paving on Dolores at the end of that last project. We love all these projects in the end, we get our roads paved. All right, what do we need to do on this one? Are we gonna issue the encroachment permit tonight?
It is, if that's what you vote to do.
Okay.
Yeah, you would authorize issuance of the encroachment permit when Javier is done with, maybe we'll add, you know, ten more conditions, Calam.
So you're ready for us to issue the permit, even though you're not finished with the, with the conditions? Okay, okay, all right, so it sounds like we need a motion?
I make a motion to authorize issuance of this encroachment permit with the special conditions of approval.
I'll second it.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Delves?
Yes.
Councilmember Dramoff?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody, for all the work you put into that, appreciate it. And next, we get Ken Wisaki, our Public Works Director. We're gonna do Resolution 2025-061, authorizing the city administrator to execute Amendment Number One to the Janitorial Services Agreement with Pure Sur for a total not-to-exceed amount of a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the term of July first, 2025 to December thirty-first, 2025.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, the current staff report gives a little bit of history, I try to make it brief and to the point. As you know, I just started, as we talked about, a little, about a little over a month ago. The contract with Pure Sur Building Services, which we started back in 2015, 2016, they've been our service, our janitorial service since then, and we've had a couple of extensions over time, but that current contract ended yesterday, and since I just got on board, I had time to do a full RFP, also do an assessment on how well their services are doing, I do have a good understanding, but I want to definitely go through a process, an RFP process, so I'm asking for the current contract to provide an extension on our current contract to get me till December, at least until December, so I can start going through the process, but also to provide operational continuity, and also gives me the time to evaluate everything that's been going on, and also interviewing all the different departments. Any questions?
From what you've seen so far, they're doing a good job. I see them all the time, and they, they're very nice.
They've been doing a great job. January, we had a person that was on this contract, that, you know, knows us very intimately, he left, retired, and then they had some new people, and there was little bumps around there, but Cleve is right on top of that, we brought them in, said, this is what, this is what we're concerned about, and they addressed it, so they're really good at addressing when we need something immediately.
Okay, good, so you think they're, they're good enough for the next six months?
Enough, enough, the next six months.
Their contract expired yesterday, so.
Yes, it did.
It's timely.
Yes.
All right.
I move to approve the resolution in our packet.
Second.
Thank you. That one.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Delves?
Yes.
Councilmember Dramoff?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ken. All right, moving on to item number five, which is receiving a report and provide policy direction regarding the installation of additional stop signs at intersections within the commercial district. Chief Tomasi is gonna take this one on.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and council. I certainly hope mine is as quick as Ken's, but I doubt it.
So do we.
Powerpoint. So, as this PowerPoint comes up, this is me providing you with what we discussed at the Traffic Safety Committee meeting in May, and the origin of this is basically, the Traffic Safety Committee, which is, used to be the Community Traffic Safety Commission, would meet on issues and then come back to council as a commission, but they switched that commission to a committee in mid-2000, so staff, the Planning Director, Public Works Director, and Director of Public Safety, can address a lot of the complaints and issues around town and just resolve it quickly. Things like installing stop signs have to come back to council, which we've done over the years, but I've seen in the last fifteen years, a lot of repeat issues that keep coming up at the Traffic Safety Committee, so I started digging through our files to see how many times have these come up, and I found a staff report from 2005 that addresses a lot of the issues that are, keep coming up. So, I presented that staff report at the May Traffic Safety Committee meeting, and I want to present it to you tonight with a little bit of explanation, a little bit of change in direction by the current Traffic Safety Committee, and then receive input from you, and if any decisions are made about adding stop signs downtown, we would then return to council with a request and a resolution for that at a future meeting. We're still waiting. Oh, there it is, so, receiver report on this, and I, hopefully, I make this a little bit more digestible than I did at the Traffic Safety Committee meeting with a lot of names and stuff, so. There you go, I just covered all that, but in 2003, the city contracted with Higgins and Associates to do a traffic survey of the downtown area, and the downtown area is defined as Uniparro to Monteverde, and then Fifth Avenue over to Eighth, that's the commercial, commercial district. Did that work, or did you do it? I don't know, it was perfect timing. The traffic engineer for Higgins was Van Hearden, and what she recommended was fifteen locations downtown in the commercial district with, by making them four-way stops. She brought that information back to the Traffic Safety Commission, who discussed it at one of their meetings, and in all of those fifteen intersections, we lost all power. Fifteen of those intersections, the ones you see on this chart in red, the commission agreed with, the ones in black, the commission actually didn't, and the reasons they didn't agree with making them four-way stops are this. San Carlos and Fifth is the Post Office Hill, which is a one-way street, and staff came back and said, we're concerned about vehicles rolling back and added confusion at that intersection, so let's keep that two-way. And then you have San Carlos and Sixth, and Mission and Sixth, which are right next to the fire station. And the fire department and ambulance department said, if you put stop signs on East and West Mission right there, you might get vehicles backing up, and it's really gonna cause a problem when we go code three out of that building, waiting for cars to clear. So of all that, the commission came back and said, we agree with you on twelve of these. They presented it to council at a meeting in July of 2005, twenty years ago, and this is what it looks like on a map, because I'm more of a visual person and looking at charts, it was a little bit blurring last time we did it. If we look at this chart, these are the intersections identified and approved by the Traffic Commission when they brought it back to council, and it is, if you look, you have Uniparro at the right-hand side, going west down to Monteverde, so, Mission and Fifth, they said, let's make that a four-way stop, Dolores and Fifth, Lincoln and Fifth, all four-way stops, so you can see those identified throughout downtown. The only ones that weren't four-way stops were Monteverde and Sixth, and Monteverde and Fifth, which is a three-way intersection, and the commission recommended, as did the engineer, to make that a single stop as you head westbound. The X's you see on the map are those three I just identified, San Carlos and Fifth by the Post Office, which they left alone, and then the two by the fire station, which they left as two-way stops. So at that July council meeting, council said, go ahead with Phase One, and Phase One are the three in green, go ahead and make those four-way stops. So that is Mission and Seventh, is that Mission and Seventh? No, San Carlos and Seventh, and Dolores and Seventh, as well as Mission and Fifth. Those all became four-way stops after that meeting, staff implemented those. Nothing happened after that, there were no other phases, nobody came back, the staff report ended up in a file in our basement, and I found it a couple of months ago. Since then, though, the Traffic Safety Committee continues to hear requests for stop signs, and we've come back to council, and the next slide shows that over the past twenty years, we've converted three more intersections in the commercial district to four-way stops, that being Mission and Eighth, Lincoln and Seventh, and then Dolores and Fifth. There we have it, we're down to one, two, three, four, five, six intersections that weren't touched after that report, so we started looking at it from the Traffic Safety Committee, and we made these recommendations at our meeting. We agree with the commission and the council from 2005 to leave the ones adjacent to the fire station as two-way stops. We understand the reasoning, but for cross-traffic going north and south on both those streets, we suggest adding, cross-traffic does not stop. Anyone who travels on those streets, people walk out, cars are confused at those intersections, but that would really help to have a large sign there that just lets motorists know that there's no stopping by the cross-traffic. The only other change on this that you'll see on this map is if you go to Monteverde and Fifth, and Monteverde and Sixth, the Traffic Safety Commission Committee now suggests making those three-way stops. If you have those two as just wide open, not stopping, it really takes away from the uniformity, that was the intent of the engineering study and the commission's recommendations, to try to unify as much of the, of the commercial district as a four-way intersection stops. So the committee is suggesting changing those to three-way stops. Right now, they have no stop signs.
They have one stop sign.
No.
No, they don't.
Nothing at those.
They do it all the time, it's rather surprising.
What started this whole thing, and me finding this staff report, was really the San Carlos and Fifth, top of the hill of the Post Office, which I think I've personally heard on the Traffic Safety Committee about four times, and each time, we go back and we add signs, we remove signs, we paint arrows, we're trying to reduce the confusion that staff said there would be if we added the stop signs, so there's still confusion at that intersection. For those of you who are visual, that's the intersection we're talking about, you have cars coming up from the Post Office, and they don't stop, as well as cars traveling in the direction you're looking, they don't stop, but the cross-traffic does. Again, Again, staff in 2005 said there was, there would be problems with rollbacks of vehicles, and it would be confusing. The committee, the committee now, after listening to it, it's been confusing for years. So what do we do now? Do we add more signs? Do we take them away? Do we add more painting? The Traffic Safety Committee now is taking the approach of, maybe we do look at making this a four-way stop. We get complaints of cars going the wrong way down the hill. We have electric vehicles now that don't have the braking and rollback issue. A lot of delivery trucks are automatic now, and that doesn't seem to be as big of a concern as it was 20 years ago. So the committee is suggesting, maybe we do, take a look at making this a four-way stop, because it is confusing every time you go through it. So that's it right there. So we recommend making it a four-way stop. The point I want to make on this, though, is we have a congestion problem downtown with traffic. And I would argue that it's probably worse now than it was 20 years ago when this study came out. Adding stop signs doesn't do anything to congestion. I think that's another conversation for another time as to how to relieve that. What this does by adding stop signs and more consistency in the commercial district is it provides a safer environment. It slows vehicles down, and it makes it safer for pedestrians and other motors who are traveling through the commercial district. So there you go. San Carlos and Fifth, where the committee suggests making that a four-way stop and taking a look at that. If we do that, we're talking about seven intersections and a total of 16 stop signs going in, in the commercial district. Oops. That's it.
Okay.
That was a little bit slower, but it was a lot of information. And we're open for questions, and this is just a discussion topic.
Anybody have any questions? Is that a no? No questions?
Chief, do you, do you subscribe to that concern about the ambulance, like, traffic getting backed up on Sixth, if those were four-way stops?
I do. Yeah, yeah. I would be more concerned about our response out of there. And the way they have to back in and park, having cars backed up at those stop signs could be a real safety hazard.
Do you think that converting all the, basically all the, all the stops would be, all the intersections would be stops, except for those two, at this point?
I, I.
Do you think that could cause even more confusion and dangerous situations for non-emergency vehicles, because they're expecting everything to be a stop now?
At those two intersections, that's why it's important that we really mark that, that cross-traffic doesn't stop at those two intersections.
You think that's enough?
I think that's enough.
Okay. I was in on the Traffic Safety Committee when you made this decision, and it was a good session. It was well-attended, I think. And the surf shop at the corner there has given, many times, has told me they see really bad situations almost every day, including, I went and checked with them again, knowing this was coming up. It's, it's a problem. I'm surprised Karen's not here. She must be back east, huh? Because Karen, Karen was a big advocate for this, big. She, she gave a good speech, so. All right. Public comments? Here we go. That's why you're here.
I see crazy situations on Lincoln Street in the middle of the block every single day. So, you know, I don't think the surf shop really is who we should lean on on making a decision like this, because the post office, we do have a lot more congestion than we did 20 years ago when this survey was done. Now there's Amazon trucks, UPS trucks, DHL trucks. A garbage truck the other day was stopped there, and it blocked up traffic so quick, people trying to leave the parking lot, people trying to get to the post office, me trying to get to the drop-off, drive-through. It was a cluster you know what. And if you put a four-way stop there, it's going to cause so much traffic jam there that no one will even want to go to the post office. Maybe that's the plan, so we can get rid of that and have addresses everywhere. But if you put a four-way stop at that intersection, it will be chaos. And I think that's what you really need to think about, not a 20-year-old study or a stone surfer sitting there watching cars go the wrong way. Have you been in that intersection? You probably don't. I mean, the, the signs, some of them are so old, they're faded. There definitely could be better signage, better painting. Carmel's confusing. If you put a four-way stop sign on every single intersection in town, you're going to have people confused, making the wrong turn, making a U-turn in the middle of a, of a, of a street they shouldn't be, still going down the one-way street. That's not going to stop that, but it's going to really screw up traffic in that area. Just as important is the emergency vehicles. That's a huge flow of traffic. People come to the post office, dropping things off. Go, 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 go. Bad, bad, bad idea. Please, consider not doing that there and just putting the right signage, new signage, signage that's so confusing that no one even want to drive through there except the locals, because it's going to be really bad if you don't. Thank you very much.
Parker, while you're here?
Yeah?
What are your opinions about the other stop signs? Because they're, they're.
Yeah, those, those are fine. Those are great, you know?
All right.
Especially the ones on Monteverde. I, I take that route, and you got cars coming, they don't even have a stop, and they pull that in front of you. That's, those are dangerous on Monteverde.
Okay. So, so the only one, since we don't have many people here speaking, the only one you're concerned about is the one at the top of the hill?
For the most part. I mean, you know, I like Carmel's great. I like to keep Carmel, Carmel. We're a town with no stoplights, but now we're going to be a town with all stop signs everywhere you go.
Sort of looking that way.
When will you stop putting them up?
All right. Thank you, Parker. Thanks for, thanks.
You got to have some sort of flow of traffic in a 20-year-old traffic report.
Thanks for coming out, Parker. We appreciate it.
I would like to add my support for the San Carlos and Fifth stop, four-way stop. It's a real problem. Constantly, people are in the middle of the intersection. It's just ugly. Please fix that with a four-way stop. Thank you.
And you like the other ones, too?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Donna Jett. I too agree we need a stop sign and the silliness about rolling backwards. San Francisco has stop signs at the top of a hill, so that was old-fashioned. But I totally agree, because I have to stop there, because the other way does not stop a lot. And every city has block after block of stop signs for people's safety, and it controls the people speeding. So I heartily endorse a stop sign there. Always wondered why there wasn't one. And anywhere else you put them, I agree, we're a small town. Stopping every block is not a problem. In most cities, it's the way it is to control safety. Thank you.
Donna?
All the rest of them are fine.
Donna, since we don't have many, I can be informal here. Do you have any concern about there being chaos, like Parker just said?
No. Without a stop sign, there's more chaos. Nobody knows when it's their turn.
All right.
I think it, yeah, stop them, makes them think.
Okay, thank you. Andy, you don't have any comments?
We have a hand raised on Zoom.
Okay, nobody else here? All right, go.
Karen Ferlido, go ahead.
I, I created Karen out of nowhere.
Hi.
Karen, hi Karen.
Yes, I just got back from back east, and this is important. I think we have to do whatever we can in our town to make it as safe as possible for pedestrians and drivers. I myself have had close calls at that San Carlos and Fifth. And the women, the women at the post office have told me how often, virtually every day, somebody comes down going the wrong way. And I think that's because they don't stop going west, they don't have the, and they just head on down the street. So I think that is a vital one to fix. It's very confusing. When you create consistency, you create more safety. We have so many people who are confused, who don't see that there isn't a stop sign, and then they stop anyway, and that creates confusion. The other one I think is important is Dolores and Sixth by Village Corner. I have almost been hit there several times, because the locals tend to go too fast on Dolores, heading to and from, and other people don't realize that they're not going to stop, and they come out into the intersection expecting people to stop. So yes, I believe in consistency. I thank the chief for finding that traffic study, which probably should have been done years ago. I also think that the point that when there are stop signs, cars go slower is very important. Cars are 22% bigger than they were years ago. They kill people now. They don't just maim them when they hit you. And we have a lot of oversized vehicles downtown. They need to go slowly. They need to stop at stop signs. Thank you very much for entertaining this, and I hope you will follow the Traffic Committee's suggestions. They have studied this for years. And also, thanks to Chief Tomasi for bringing this back. I appreciate it very much.
So Karen, you're in favor of all the stop signs that are being recommended?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you for being an active participant in this, at the meeting and now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else online? All right. Anybody else in the chamber before we, go ahead. Go ahead, Parker.
Every day, someone also drives the wrong way down scenic.
If you're going to speak, I don't mind you coming up, because we had some counter to your argument, so I'd like to.
Back to Karen. Every day, someone drives the wrong way down scenic, and people walk right down the middle of the road. Maybe we should just close that off. I mean, if you want to make people safe, we can't let them walk down the middle of the street every single day and then also drive the wrong way. So maybe we just put all the stop signs everyone wants and close scenic off to residents only. Everyone will be happy.
I've seen them go the wrong way, too. Thank you. All right. Bringing it back for discussion. Who wants to start? Or does anybody want to start?
Yeah, so I think I agree with everything that Karen just said. So maybe more than anybody, other than Jeff, except Jeff rides his bike and takes the bus more than I do. I cut through this whole part of town, just because from where I live, right? I live in Fourth and Camino, so I'm always going up Sixth, Fifth, whatever. In fact, I picked the, I picked the route where there aren't the stop signs, so that I can get through town fast. Yeah, and I'm probably a menace. Right? And, well, you know, I know the rhythm of it, but it is, our current situation, I believe, is confusing. I believe it is dangerous. I believe it's dangerous to pedestrians. I believe it is dangerous to, at least our visitors in their vehicles, because there's no consistency, and they think that there is. So they actually think that there's stop signs. And, and they behave accordingly, but that's, they're just confused. And especially the point, the vehicles are big, and they're heavy, and the drivers are distracted more than they were 20 years ago, more than they were 10 years ago. I mean, the, you know, I see this everywhere, as they're driving and looking at the same time. And I think, unfortunately, because of these things, they're increasingly in a hurry and maybe even increasingly angry. So I think we just got to calm the whole thing down. And I think these, every one of these stop signs will do that. The only one I was giving second thought to is the post office one, kind of for the reasons that have been brought up. But I think, I think we need to try it, because that, that's confusion junction right now as to what is, and I think, I think it was Karen that said that, especially westbound there, not having a stop sign is really problematic. Eastbound, if, if we were going to not do one sign, that would be the eastbound sign there, but then a three-way intersection, a three-way stop is not a great idea. Definitely agree with the ones on, on Monteverde. Those, that's dangerous.
Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll go next. I'm the, I'm the guy that talks about this all the time, and I think a lot of people are going to be pretty surprised at what I say. I'll, I'll start by saying, I'm Bob. Like, I come down, I come down Sixth, too. But I disagree with Bob. I don't think you can really be a menace, because I don't think you can drive that fast coming down Sixth. You just stop, and then you go a couple of blocks and you stop. You know, I'll, you know, Karen, who, Karen knows I love her dearly, says, "We, we have to do whatever we can do to make traffic safer for pedestrians." And, you know, to Parker's point, you know, the thing that's the most dangerous, when I walk through downtown, the thing that is the most dangerous for me, I feel like when I'm walking downtown, is a situation where there is traffic on all four streets. You know, when, when I walk down a street, when I walk down Ocean, and, you know, if you walk down Ocean on a Saturday, and you get to, like, Ocean and Dolores, and there are cars waiting to go through all four intersections, that is when I feel unsafe. And I walk, you know, as, as Bob knows, I walk up Monteverde where I thought there was a stop sign, walk up Monteverde and make that left turn to go up to the post office on Fifth. And I feel, as fast as cars come down Fifth, as fast as cars come down Fifth, I feel much less safe when there are, when there are cars at every intersection. And I think that, I think that Parker is right. I think that if we put a stop sign, to use this one-stop-sign example, I think if we put a stop sign at the upper end of the post office, it will back traffic up all through that block. That's the most travel block in town, I think. That has the most throughput of any town, of any block. And I think that when we talk about this, we forget that the purpose of roads is to get people to where they want to go. And by slowing people down, the natural thing that's going to happen is that there are going to be more cars on this, on the street, because we haven't facilitated getting them, getting them there. And that's okay, but, you know, Paul said, "Stop signs don't do anything to reduce congestion." That's a conversation for another time. Like, I think that's a conversation for now. Like, I think that, I think that the problem is congestion. And I think that more stop signs in town, you know, I think that just putting stop signs on every corner will cause congestion. You know, we talked about, you know, Paul talked about the, the Traffic Safety Committee, or whichever committee it was, talking about consistency. Well, that, that version of consistency is having a stop sign on every corner. And there are other versions of consistency as well. There's a version of consistency where all of the east-west streets don't have stop signs, and all of the northern stop streets do have stop signs. There are other ways to think about consistency other than, other than simply just plonking down a stop sign, plonking down a stop sign at every problem, at every corner. And the things that I wrote down were Lincoln and Fifth and Monteverde and Fifth and Sixth, where I thought there was a stop sign. And now that I know that there's not, it makes a lot of sense. But I think there should be one, like, I, for example, think that there should be one stop sign at the intersection of Monteverde and Fifth, and one stop sign at the intersection of Monteverde and Sixth, so that the people that are, that are speeding downhill, you know, on, on Fifth, where the, where the slope really is greater, not back behind, not back behind the hotel, will stop. You know, the people that are coming the other way, they're just not going that fast. You know, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of parking congestion on Monteverde between Fifth and Sixth. And it's just, like, I don't feel like that, for me who walks through that intersection, I don't feel like that's unsafe. What I feel like is having more stop signs will make me more unsafe, because there will be more cars that I will have to deal with as a pedestrian. So I have some problems, like, I'm not prepared, so I'm, right now, not prepared to accept this unless we make some, unless we were to make some, have, have a longer discussion about congestion.
Hans? Thank you, Jeff. That was interesting. Good comments.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, it's interesting, you know, it's interesting to get both perspectives. You know, when I, when I come to one of those intersections where the cars, I guess, I, I feel the benefit of the cars have actually stopped. So yes, there are more cars staring at me, but they're, they're physically stopped, and so I can make eye contact with the person in the car and get a sense of, okay, they see me, they've recognized me. And I, I can only go based on my lived experience, right? And so like, when I'm, you know, when I got my kids and we're, like, trying to cross Sixth with a stroller, it's sketchy. You know, it's, it's, the cars are going quickly, they don't stop, there's no way to know that they've seen you or not. And no matter where I cross, it seems, whether it's at Mission, or it's down by Village Corner, or wherever you. So I, you know, I think it's safer if there are these stop signs. I think the consistency is good. You know, potentially, the residential areas is a different story, but definitely downtown, especially in a town with so many out-of-town visitors who are on vacation. And like Bob says, folks are increasingly distracted with the technology. You know, I, I, at the end of the day, I also. You know, at the end of the day, I also want to listen to, you know, Chief Tomasi. And if he tells me that this is going to make us materially safer, then that's where I'm at.
So it sounds like you're in favor of all the recommendations?
Yeah.
Rather than... Okay.
I agree with a lot of the points that Bob and Hans made, but Jeff, I do appreciate your perspective and what you brought up for us to think about. And the one that worries me the most, though, is the post office one because I do see Parker exactly what you are saying, and the cars backing up, and it's just chaos and confusing for everybody involved. But what I'm willing to do is go ahead and add the stop signs. And Chief, you're always really good about coming back to us and giving us updates and making changes. And, you know, whether it's six months from now or a year from now, you know, we can revisit this and see what's working, what's not working, and we can further amend it at that point. But right now, I think the key is pedestrian safety, and I think that the stop signs will help. So right now, I'm in favor of adding them.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is, and I would support this, if we put a stop sign at the top of the hill, that we closely monitor it closely, like, which you can do. There are plenty of people around to give you feedback. And if it's a problem, if it's chaos, like Parker's saying and Jeff is concerned about, that we pull it out. Is that what we're saying? That you're going to be unafraid to make that adjustment? Yeah. You can get up if you want.
Thank you, Mary.
Why don't you describe how that's going to work? Because it sounds like that's... It's a concern to all of us, I think.
And that came up at the Traffic Safety Committee. If we put in a stop sign and it does result in the type of congestion that we have concerns with the post office, you can take it out.
Could be tested.
Could. Yeah, I mean...
You need a line. You need a line. You need everything there.
You can put up temporary stop signs wherever you need them, but...
Do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we've got public works people that are highly competent at putting them in and taking them out. All right, so the test would be the real thing. We're just considering a test? You okay with that?
If that's the direction, yeah, that's fine with me.
I mean, we're going to talk about that with some other things, and so, I mean, I would feel better about that personally. That I'm concerned. I have concerns about it. I think we all do, actually, because it's an unknown. So...
Yeah, completely unknown. And again, 20 years ago, they said, no. We're saying, maybe we try it. Let's try it and see what happens. If they were right 20 years ago, they'll be right now, and then you can just take it out.
Okay, it sounds like...
Yeah, they're all kind of tests. They're all test measures. So again, if there are impacts that we didn't anticipate, we'll come back here, we'll take them out ourselves.
Okay. All right, so we're going to keep a close eye on everything. And one concern I have is people aren't necessarily stopping at stop signs. So it's a little bit of a false safety premise, like the one we put in at Ninth that I was involved with.
Yeah.
I still see people just blowing through it, going 30 miles an hour all the time. And Toby, the wine tour guy? I think he wrote to you and me that he sees it all day long because he stands there waiting to start his tours. People just going 25 miles an hour right through the stop sign.
Yes.
And it could be, there could be lots of reasons. Okay, it sounds like we're ready for a motion here.
I think we have, all we needed was your direction, counsel. So I think we have it, and we'll come back with a policy resolution, try to get it on August, and go from there.
Okay, it sounds like you have four thumbs ups.
Yeah.
And keep a close eye on it.
Correct. We'll come back with a staff report with all of those recommendations and with the resolution.
That's all you need tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good. Thank you. All right. No reason to stop now. We're going to receive a report now from Brandon, I believe, that was done over the last month to explore a potential pilot program for downtown valet parking and provide direction to staff on whether to proceed with requests for proposal to begin the pilot program. Counsel will also be asked to consider whether or not to explore adjusting the city's approach to compliance with AB 413 daylighting law. I might point out before you get started that while this was going on, you were gone for a period of time, Chief Tomasi was gone for a period of time, Chip was gone for a period of time. And I think all things considered, with all that, I think we did a good job of gathering enough information to have another discussion about this. So thank you for your great help on this. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for the intro, Mayor. Good evening. So as the mayor said, we're here to talk about really two things, the valet parking pilot program that we discussed last time, and then a little bit more conversation about AB 413. So why are we here? First and foremost, you know, we like to keep council involved, get your fingerprints, get your thoughts on these things. That's very much what this is meant to be, your sort of classic yes-no, red light, green light conversation. We're looking for two pieces of direction tonight before we get out of here. One has to do with the valet parking pilot program. I'm going to give you a report on some of the research that we've been doing over the last month and hopefully get yes-no direction on whether to proceed with that pilot program. It's also going to include exploring some other adjacent and related opportunities that still involve the valet program, but could even go further to address parking and congestion. And then the second piece of direction we're looking for tonight has to do with AB 413 and consider looking at alternate approaches to remain compliant with AB 413. But that may require some outside help, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. So just for a little bit of background, your last meeting, the mayor presented an all-in parking and traffic conversation. It was a wide-ranging conversation. Valet parking was one part of that. We talked about AB 413, paid parking, and a host of other things related to parking and congestion in the downtown area. The most explicit direction we got out of that was to start exploring the valet pilot program because it could be stood up quickly and taken down quickly. And it's novel, and it's something that, you know, we can do, I think, in such a small little area. Council did have some very good questions that we needed to follow up on specifically about things like insurance, risks, zoning compliance, how the fees would be collected. And so the mayor and myself and Katie Anea with the Carmel Chamber, and I'm pleased to say Jack Norman is sitting in the back there, is actually interning with us for two months. You may recognize him. He was two-time planning director for the city council, Carmel High School mock city council meeting. So he's actually back from Stanford this summer, working with us for a couple of months. So he's on this group with us as well. And he played a big part in this. I'll talk about some of his research here in a little bit. So we have all been working over the last month and are back to you with some of those answers to get that red light, green light. So a quick overview, how we see this, and of course, this is early on, so the concept can and probably will evolve. But the idea right now is to stage some sort of valet parking station at the top of Ocean, near the Carmel Blessed Plaza. You can see north is up on this one. So that's Unipro Avenue with Unipro Street with the red circle on it where those buses park. Vehicles would park, then be taken somewhere around the downtown core in both public and private lots. We've been exploring options for that. It would allow for dynamic use of lots when they're underutilized. Think a church during, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, they're not using their space. So if we can create relationships with those, and some of them have already expressed interest, the mayor's been doing a great job of making those connections, we can use those lots when they're underutilized through the professional valet service, which we would look to a professional, not be looking to do this in-house. One of the pieces of research that Jack was able to turn up is that when you have a space, a parking lot, run by a valet professional, you can squeeze 25% more out of the space because the cars get moved in and out by a professional. So if you typically can park 100 cars in a space, you can at least get 25% more or 125 cars in a space. It could be more, depending on how the lot's laid out, but that's a safe bet, that you're going to get at least 25%. The concept of a valet program prevents cars from entering that downtown loop of the core. It just gets them completely out of the circulation, hopefully addressing some of that congestion that we were talking about earlier. First biggest question, and I think the very wise question was, what does liability look like for something like this? So we spoke to the city's insurance broker, we spoke to our city attorney. This is not a program or an idea that doesn't exist anywhere else. Our risk could be mitigated through properly insuring any vendors. We would have various levels, as you can see up on the screen here. Some of them are optional. If the vendor were to collect funds, we would look for an optional crime insurance, but we'll get to that in a minute. All of these requirements, if we did move forward with this program, would be put into an RFP. We would send out looking for that professional valet partner. So they would have to come to the table with all of these insurances to make sure that the city didn't have too much liability. So in conclusion, there's always liability in everything. I'm sure the city attorney is happy to hear me say that, but the minimal liability with the insurance mitigated. The next question we heard from city council had to do with zoning consistency. Is this really the right fit for the village? Is this something that our general plan and our zoning code even allows? So our planning department did a really thorough zoning analysis. The zoning code has no prohibitions on valet parking. The general plan, there's a host of objectives and policies that would back this up. There's nothing explicit about valet parking, but I just, you know, cherry picked one here that talks about providing alternate parking out of the public view, in scale, so smaller lots. We feel like this is very appropriate. So the conclusion is the pilot program would be consistent with the zoning and general plan. Another big question was, you know, is going to be money changing hands? Who does that? Where does it go? We talked to our city finance manager, we spoke with other jurisdictions. Valet and paid parking programs carry a high risk with respect to accounting. Said differently, there's a lot of opportunity for fraud in paid parking and valet parking. Not to say we would partner with somebody that we wouldn't trust, but it's just the nature of this world because there are a lot of money moving around quickly. So the best practice we found is for the city to do the collection and then pay a vendor for doing this service. We do currently have technology that would allow us to do this. We don't have to buy any new technology or anything to be able to collect fees. So the conclusion, our recommendation would be the city would collect those fees and then pay a valet service directly. We did a little bit of extra research. I do believe that council asked, you know, do we know what other people are doing? So Jack did a great job. He reached out to four other cities, spoke with their planning department, spoke with their other departments, and we gathered some information. This is a generalization. I have a slide on the next chart, which is the matrix that he put together. I won't read through that whole thing, but in general, these are the big points we learned. Those are the four cities you can see up there. They all have year-round programs. There was limited to no public opposition when it was stood up, and there continues to be very, very little opposition, if any. Three of the four cities, surprisingly to us, don't charge for this service. They pay for it out of their general fund as an operating, you know, anywhere between $75,000 to $125,000 a year, just as a measure to reduce congestion. All of them use professional valet service, and I'm going to look to Jack. I believe that was something they all hammered on us very hard and said, do not try to do this yourself. Get a professional valet service to do this. Most of them had public lots that they could use, so that's what they did mostly, but there were some small private property utilizations as well. Over the period that these were done, some of them are still ongoing, a couple of them, or one of them was just a pilot program for a few years, but still, there were no major accidents reported and no liability or legal actions taken during that period. So this is just a snapshot. I'm not going to go through this, but just so you can see, we did a lot of thorough research, reaching out to all these cities, asking questions about these various topics. When I say we, I mean Jack. Jack did a great job, and he's been doing a wonderful job in the two weeks he's been with us already. So I want to commend him for that. As part of this conversation, so we've talked about the valet in this group that we've had with the mayor and Katie and Jack and myself, there are some other opportunities that are adjacent to a valet program that we would like to explore with the council's blessing. One of those is to enter into some sort of partnership with the chamber. They were here last time. Katie can't join us tonight, she's under the weather. But the chamber is all in on trying to get the businesses to be part of the solution and their employees as well. So we'd like to couple an employee parking shuttle program. And then also, I'm going to talk a little bit about intelligent parking tracker that we'd like to try out, maybe in one of the lots, that can communicate with people's cell phones so they know where there are available parking spaces. So the first opportunity is that chamber partnership. We've met with them several times. The businesses are part of the overall solution when it comes to their employees. We heard in the meeting last time that residents would rather see employees parking in the residential district than visitors because it's the same person over and over again. They can learn how to park a little bit better. And so there's a survey out right now that Katie's helping us with to the chamber members to find out, you know, what's going to entice them to get their employees to participate in this. If we bring on a professional valet service, there is a potential to run some kind of employee shuttle through valet service. Let's say that they park in certain residential areas. You could have a real-time app that, you know, a group of them drop off, and they say, hey, come and get us. We get a six-person golf cart. We just want some runway to explore this because we feel like we've got some opportunities to try some new and exciting things that haven't been tried before. It's a very early idea. It could go a lot of different directions. But we see this as an opportunity to bolt on to a valet program. Certainly, more research and discussion is needed. The second opportunity has to do with this intelligent parking idea. This is using an app that ties to cameras that basically count parking spaces in a lot. We can use the Sunset Center lot as an example. If we were able to carve out part of that lot, it would be able to real-time tell us or tell a valet service, or even if we had a website we wanted to stand up where someone's coming down the highway, and they know that a certain part of the north lot has some vacancy, they wouldn't have to drive all the way around town, they could just go straight there. We don't know if this is going to be something that's widely accepted. We don't know, but it's something we want to try. Again, we think since we're trying creative new ideas, why not use some technology along the way? So this would be another opportunity we'd like to explore as a group and then come back to council and talk about it. So I should say with all of the valet pilot program stuff, the intention is to come back to council every month with an update on what we're doing so that we can bring you along the whole way. And if we need policy guidance about, you know, where to go with something or how something is or isn't working, we can make sure that the council and the community are part of that conversation. So that's the valet program in a nutshell. That's the first piece of direction we're looking for tonight. The second piece is going to be much shorter. You already know about this. AB 413 does have provisions in it which allows for alternate approaches to compliance. We have done some early research on measures that maybe could help us take an alternate approach by reducing the speed limit downtown, reconfiguring the size of certain spaces to be compact, which reduces the view impacts and things like that. It does require a professional traffic engineer, however. That's one of the things we would need to do is engage someone, pay them to do some surveying and prepare a traffic report before we could actually implement these measures and still be compliant with AB 413. So what we're looking on that, what we're looking for on that is a green light from council to explore alternate approaches because one of the things we could yield from that is potentially finding some more parking spaces downtown. That would be a desired outcome of this. It wouldn't just be for no reason. So to wrap up, council direction we're looking for tonight, two different things. Valet parking pilot program. We'd like a red light or green light to launch that RFP and explore those other opportunities that I talked about. And then on AB 413, we'd really just like your thoughts on proceeding to do an RFP, to work with a traffic engineer, to explore those alternate approaches. Again, as I said, we would plan on returning to council monthly to talk with you about how we're doing and what we're doing and the outcome of our pilot program. With that, I'm available for questions. I know the mayor is happy to talk about this. So I'm here. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you for the time that you've done, and I have to say that it is wonderful having Jack around. He's a sharp guy, and he works. And I also want to give credit to Andrew, who presented last time. He's also peripherally been helping out with some of the ideas and fleshing out the AB 413 stuff.
Thank you for that, Mary. Yes, you're right.
And we appreciate his time as a volunteer. It's nice.
Yeah, I neglected to mention that. I'm sorry, Andrew.
All right. Hopefully, we have some questions?
I've got a question for the chief.
Expecting so.
Yeah.
Okay. Chief. Okay. Chief.
So what I'm wondering about is, I was just thinking, from years back, I remember, and I hate to use the politically incorrect word, but meter maids, you know, we would have them going around the downtown, and people would, you know, get the chalk mark, and then, you know, people would sometimes move their chalk mark. But the thing is, there didn't seem to be as much of a problem because there was enforcement. And what, this is what I'm getting at, is enforcement. At some point, we decided as a city to not do as much enforcement. Why was that decision made? And then I know in the budget that we are adding traffic enforcement, so what, can you give us a little bit of a summarized history of that and then which direction we're going in?
Sure. The brief history of it is about thirty years ago, we had five parking officers that were working downtown, and over the years, it's reduced. We went down to two, but council approved a third position in 2014 when we implemented the paid parking management program, or the parking management program for a short time before we took it out. But at that time, what they did is they implemented, instead of chalking the license plate, I'm sorry, the, yeah, license plate reading mechanisms, LPRs, on the parking scooters for the parking attendants to go around and track vehicles instead of chalking. So we have two right now parking officers who can go around and do that. So we've been, we've been operating with two. We didn't add any in the budget this year. We're going to maintain just the two.
Maybe I was confused because right now, we have Cindy from animal control. She's doing it part-time, so maybe I thought, but we are at least going to have more than just her doing it, right?
Correct. We had a vacancy occur during the year with one of our employees leaving, and we just filled that position with one of our existing employees, who's a dispatcher who moved over to parking.
Okay. But so I guess my question would be, and I do appreciate that history, and I do remember going back to those days with the chalking and all that. So if we did do more enforcement, couldn't that help with some of these issues, especially like, let's say, an employee or a business owner who just parks for eight hours and just leaves their car there downtown?
Yeah, part of the Walker study that we did in 2013, that's an important component. Enforcement has to go along with whatever you incorporate. Without enforcement, nobody's going to follow any rules, whatever the sign says.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead.
I don't, I don't have a question.
Jeff, do you have a question?
I have a bunch of questions, but I'll save them for comments.
Hans?
I'll save comments.
Okay. All right. Does anybody from the public have a comment? Questions?
I do a lot of walking in Carmel, and people just don't move their cars because they've gotten the word that there's nobody, there's no consequence. So I think that's a big part of what I'm seeing. And, and I think, when you think about all the employees working in all the, whether it's hospitality or the restaurants or the stores, those people are not parking. When I moved here in nineteen seventy-five, everybody, remember, was told to park, you know, like blocks away, and then they'd walk. That's not happening. And I see on our street also that people are parking cars, and so I called the police department to find out what is the ruling, how long can someone park a car? So in residential areas, they're allowed to park them for forty-eight hours, then they're tagged, and then they're, if they don't move the car, then they're ticketed. But it's, what's really amazing to me is when I call, then, next thing I know, you know who these people are because the car's gone. So it's like, I think it's the same people, and then they back off for a while, and then they do it again. So I really think, before we start any of these other convoluted, fancy, very complicated things, I think we have to go back to basics and really make sure that people know that there's parking enforcement. Plus, it's a good revenue also if they're not moving their cars.
All right. Thank you, Andy.
Hello. Linda Calafiore. I was just going to ask, what is the revenue component to the valet parking or any other parking? I personally think visitors should pay for parking in whatever way that can be, whether it's building parking lots, whether it's marking the streets, whether it's using new technology. The residents, you know, don't want to pay for parking, and possibly they should be considered. But there's been no discussion about what we hope to gain with revenue, which I think is an opportunity for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Toomey again. Just, my question is, and maybe it's too soon to know, with the AB 413 work, is there a possibility to shrink down also the red curbs that in many cases are like twenty feet on the approaching intersection? So I'm assuming that we could gain parking spaces through that action as well. So it's a, it's a nook or cranny, but would like to know that.
Yeah, that's part of the plan. Anybody else? Anybody online?
Karen Folito, go ahead. In a sec, hold on. Okay, Karen Folito, go ahead.
Takes me a minute to unmute. Obviously, we all know how congested it is downtown, and it's becoming uncomfortably congested, and part of it is the lack of enough enforcement. When people are making three-point turns in the middle of the street to grab a spot, when they're doing U-turns on the corners, there's just a lot of very safe, unsafe, excuse me, behavior. You know, I've been on the east coast in small villages in Hudson Valley and in Vermont, and lots of cars because they're tourist places, but I just didn't have this feeling of cars coming at me everywhere like I do now when I walk downtown. And that's, that makes me sad because I do enjoy walking in our town, and I think if more residents walked, we'd have less cars downtown too, so that's a plug for that. But our streets are small, and with these extra-large cars, I think we also feel the congestion more. But I don't think we've ever, ever been successful, and I've been here thirty-seven years, in getting business owners to get their employees to park somewhere where they don't have to move them every two hours. When you're moving cars every two hours and you're on, say, you know, an eight or ten-hour shift, whatever, that's creating chaos in itself, all that moving around of the same cars. So obviously, trying to solve the employee parking is, I think, the crux of the issue. I also want you to not forget, you got several letters, you got several emails about not pushing the parking into that area at Forest Theater because you're pushing valet parking, it possibly, into that parking lot. Valet park, parking people, although they are very professional and usually very safe, they're also in a hurry to get that car parked or get that car back to people. I'm very concerned about the speed of what the valet parking might contribute to in this, on our little roads and streets. But I really think we do need more enforcement. The post office parking lot is parked full some days, especially on the weekend. There's, you know, people are just desperate to park everywhere. And so I commend you for looking at things, but I, I'm not a proponent of doing away with the 413, and I want to caution you that many of the parking spots used to be twenty-six feet, I think they're now twenty-four feet, and many of them were mapped out so that you didn't open a car door into a tree because that created...
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Karen. A lot of, if you watch the presentation that Andrew gave last time, I think a lot of the points that you talked about were covered in that, and they were good points. Thank you. And just, just to comment on the Forest Theater, I've had a number of letters, as I think most of us have, and I've also had in-person discussions with the neighbors there, and I think, I think we've had a good understanding that we're all concerned about all of this in terms of safety and so on, so, and it's all considered a test of sorts. I think Brandon pointed that out. So I'm going to bring it back if nobody else has any comments before we come back to the council. Anybody else want to say something? You are, keep it short.
Ross from Carmel Drug Store spoke to me about a change in his business because people used to park in the twenty-minute zones that were at the corners, and that, and then Steve from Optic America came in, and they were both lamenting about the same issue that, so that is Lincoln between Ocean and Sixth, that used to be all twenty minutes. So now, I, from what they've said, it's not. So people can't run in to his store to get glasses or pick up glasses or whatever, and he's saying it is affecting his business. So some of the business owners are having issues as well.
Yes, they certainly are. Thank you. All right. Discussion. Jeff, you want to start?
Sure. I have a couple of questions for staff. How would the parking fees be set? If we had a, some RFP, would the fees be set in the RFP, or would it be up to the valet agency, or ten dollars for the first hour, five dollars for every extra hour? Like, how, how does that stuff happen?
It's a great question. You know, we did see that the fees are, they vary widely, and sometimes it's based on days of the week. And so I don't know if we've gotten to the point where we have that totally fleshed out on what we would actually charge, but it's certainly something we would at least mention the RFP that, you know, there would be a conversation, you know. I don't know if we would lock those in the RFP though, because we may decide to come, that we need to come back to council and have a conversation about that.
No, it's likely to be pretty dynamic.
Yeah.
I mean, that's typically how they do it, based on what I've heard.
Okay, I'm, I'm asking staff.
Okay, all right.
So the second thing is, you talked about the city's fee collection methodology, and you talked about the city collecting money versus the valet companies collecting money. Like, I can imagine the valets collecting money with Venmo or something like that. What's the city's fee collection methodology?
So we have, we could use the same system that we use for collecting the parking fees for the tour buses. We have a system, an online system, that we can collect fees for parking.
So people just show them the credit card, and they just...
Yeah. It would just go, it would go into our, essentially go into our bank account instead of their bank account.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, if the city issued, if the city issued an RFP, would the RFP be like generated inside staff based on our comments and then come back to, come back here, or would it just be generated by staff and then it would just get sent out?
We take direction, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, we take your direction. I, I think we'd want your blessing on some of the language because, not just the language, but some of the requirements for the contractor. So it's one we've never done before, right? So it's not just off the shelf. We're not just looking for a whatever. So it's unique, I think, sir.
So we're, we're kind of too late for the summer. Like, I'm playing this out, and we're already at the first of July, and if the RFP comes back, you know, if you were able to turn it around in a month, get enough information to do that, you know, I can see you being in October before you've selected someone.
Potentially. We've had, so just in the conversation that we had last month with you, we've had people reach out, so people are interested in this. I think, you know, from a best practice, you have to, you should launch an RFP for at least two weeks, so...
So that'll be August, and then you'd make a selection in September and, or in August.
In August, I would say. We could have somebody onboard by mid to late August, and then, yeah.
Okay. So I have some comments. One, you know, to beat the dead horse, it feels a little bit like the city is a patient on blood pressure medication when it comes to parking and congestion, and we've decided that we don't want to take our blood pressure medication, and then every time we get to a holiday, holiday period, you know, we drink too much or we eat too much sweet stuff, and then our blood pressure goes up, but we have heart palpitations if we go to the doctor, and we all huddle, and we decide what we're going to do about it, and the solution is we're going to not eat as much, and we're not going to drink as much, and then next year, we're in the same position, and we have the same conversation again. So this feels like, you know, this parking discussion and that earlier congestion discussion, you know, stop sign congestion, it feels like the city is just consistently applying Band-Aids to a problem that's much bigger than a Band-Aid problem. So I'll say that. And while I support, you know, I'm generally in favor of doing experiments, and I'll kind of support this, I'm not really optimistic, and it doesn't feel like, you know, having valet parking just doesn't feel like Carmel. Like, it feels like, it feels like La Jolla, or it feels like some other community, or it feels like, to use an example that was put up, it feels like Palo Alto. And I don't think that that's really what Carmel should feel like. So we talked about locations for valet parking. I'm a hard no on Sunset Center. You know, Sunset Center is used for employee parking. You know, the reason it's free, the reason it's free and not, and not paid is that we encourage employees to park in Sunset Center to keep them out of downtown. And I would hate to see us, you know, start charging people five and ten and fifteen dollars an hour tourists to park in Sunset Center and having, having those hundred and thirty employees or however many it is park elsewhere. I think that would be a pretty serious mistake. I'm also a hard no, pretty hard no on Forest Theater. You know, the Forest Theater is like a park as much as it is a theater. People in that neighborhood use that, use that, use that, and I would hate to see, you know, the Forest Theater parking lot be expanded or even more heavily used than it is now for the, because of the impacts it would have on the neighborhood, and also, like I spoke last time, on Mountain View, you know, Mountain View, Mountain View's already pretty parked on-street, and I would hate to see, it's difficult walking on Mountain View, and I would hate to see the increased traffic, you know, hourly traffic to and from, to and from the Forest Theater make that situation worse. And we've heard a lot of comments about pushing the sort of commercial parking into, into the residential areas, and while that is unfortunately, you know, maybe unavoidable, except for the residential areas that are lucky enough to have one of those no parking signs, I would hate to see the valet parking resort to parking cars in residential areas. You know, we have, you know, I think Bob and I had this conversation last month, you know, I think we would both prefer to see employees park in front of our house than tourists park in front of our house, and I would hate to see, I would hate to see the, you know, the tourist valet people start shuttling cars to and from in front of Bob's house or to and fro, in front of other residential houses. I think this is a problem for the commercial area, and I think we should try to solve the problem within the commercial area. Those are my comments.
I guess I'll go next. First of all, thank you for the research that you've done here. You know, I really appreciate you putting all these ideas on the table to spark what I think is actually a really healthy, kind of blue-sky discussion. You know, I think, I think it takes courage to do that in this town. It really does. So that being said, you know, with the benefit of some additional time to reflect and kind of discuss it with other folks in the community, I've come a bit full circle on the valet parking idea. You know, I think it really matters how we define the goal. If the goal is narrowly defined as how do we create, you know, more parking capacity downtown, this solves that, right? It's, and it's a creative way to do it. Like, I, seriously, hats off. It is very creative. But I think that, you know, the needle we need to thread here is like a little bit more complicated than that. I think it's really important how we define our goals, and I think we should define them as follows. We're trying to maximize the number of parking spaces downtown for residents and for visitors while preventing our parking issues from spilling over into residential neighborhoods and while preserving the character of Carmel. And I'm worried that the valet parking concept will run afoul of those latter two objectives. First, I'm worried that it pushes it, has the potential to push it into residential neighborhoods, depending on how it's constructed, you know, whether it's the Forest Theater or the south lot of the Sunset Center. You know, it would really increase traffic, right? Because if you're, like with valet, people are coming and going pretty frequently, right? As opposed to like employee parking, it's like every one to two hours versus every eight hours, so sort of the velocity of that is, you kind of have this constant stream of cars. And, you know, the streets surrounding the Forest Theater, whether they're, you know, Mountain View, Santa Rita, Guadalupe, like, those are really quiet streets, right? And, you know, similarly, like, I live on Mission, I walk into town behind the Sunset Center, and I was, this past weekend, for whatever reason, maybe it was the start of summer, it was a super-busy weekend, and I was walking with my kids, and like, we had to pull over every like fifteen seconds at one point because there were these cars coming. It just makes for a, kind of a terrible experience, you know, if you're a resident. And so, you know, that being said, I think my main issue is, you know, having had the chance to like turn it over more again in my mind, kind of to Jeff's point, like, I just don't know that valet parking really fits the character of Carmel. You know, valet parking is something I sort of associate with like flashier places like LA or Dallas, and Carmel's really about that sort of understated elegance. And I, I just think, now that I've had a chance to think about it more, like having a bunch of valet attendants in red jackets, like, right at the bottom of the hill, right as you enter Carmel, it just feels, you know, out of character. So, you know, it's easy to shoot things down, right? Like, that's easy to do. I also want to be constructive and talk about what I think we can do that can work and kind of how we, how we thread the needle. And I would focus on sort of two related solutions, both of which have been brought up here. The first is employee parking, and we talked about this last time, but if you've got eight-hundred-fifty spots and three hundred to three hundred and fifty, that's the estimate, are taken up by employees, like, that is the ballgame, right? I think we need to be focusing really hard on, on solving that problem. And if we can find an off-site location for employee parking that's not in the residential district, you know, something like Larson Fields or Marathon Flats or the barnyard, you know, and if we do run like a high-capacity golf cart or a trolley, you know, if we run it fast enough so employees actually use it, I actually think that that's, that's what I would prefer to really focus in on. And second, you know, to Alessandra's point, I think we really need to index on parking enforcement. You know, I was just going back and looking at the budget, and I made me reading the budget wrong because some of the job titles are confusing to me, Chip. You know, we spoke earlier today and I think we both remembered having four FTEs. I feel like I just looked and saw two and I could be wrong, but either way, whether it's in the budget or whether we need to add it, I do think adding additional capacity for parking enforcement is is really important. Um, and for the reasons like Andy mentioned, I do feel like people, you know, people know that they can park kind of with impunity. Um, and, you know, there's probably times where we need significantly more people, like on those busy weekends, finding a way to flex up or flex down. I know it's really difficult to find folks with part-time employment, et cetera, but the visual impact of having, you know, folks on the street with enforcement, I think would be would be big. And, you know, these are, these are synergistic, you know, proposals, right? If you have the employee parking, coupling it with the enforcement is really important because then the employers are going to say, well, I'm more likely to take this shuttle if I know that there's enforcement, right? So again, just to kind of, you know, recapitulate, I think like defining the goal is super important. Like we want to maximize the number of spaces downtown available for residents, available for paying customers. You know, I think we can do that with the employee parking, um, preventing that issue from spilling over into residential neighborhoods um and maintaining the character of Carmel while we do it. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Bob.
Those are good. Thanks. Um, you know, when we did our agenda setting or or priority setting, um, what seems like a year ago, I know it was just a few months ago. Um, we did, we did not put parking on there, at least I I didn't. And part of the reason is not because I don't think it's important. I think it's a huge problem. Um, but just having in a prior life worked on trying to solve a parking problem, that it's a game of whack-a-mole. And um, in unless you can stop or slow the arrival rate of cars, um, and if you have fixed capacity of parking, you're gonna, that's where the congestion comes from. You've heard me say I used to, I used to design call centers and um, I can either add agents or um I can um slow the arrival rate of uh people by saying, we'll call you back. And if I can't do one of those things, wait times go through the roof. And this is the same same thing. Um, the be- the beauty of valet parking is at least in theory, it it slows the arrival rate because it it allows a car to only get, that that car can't penetrate the core, right? It just gets to the bus stop um on Junipero and gets put somewhere that's not on the the main streets of the core. So you actually have slowed the arrival rate. So that's, it I it could be an effective tool in that regard. Um, and uh to your point, the um employee parking and having employees park elsewhere increases the capacity uh of what's downtown. And, you know, I I think Brandon, that that the work you've done, you quickly focused in on those two things and maybe that was, you know, instinctive, but that I think those were clever things to focus on first. Then I I actually agree with, I do agree with the enforcement conversation um here as well. And we know that we we know that we've been understaffed there and um even just getting back to whatever's in the budget is is a lot more. Um, so what to do? Um, I certainly any effort, ongoing effort on the employee side, working with the um the chamber just seems to make a lot of sense. If it's like, but kind of sort of like Jeff's, I think, said, it's like, I'm I'm ready to go try things. I'm I'm already a little bit resigned to like, well, will it really work or is this just doing the same thing over and over again and and not having success? But we, I think we ought to keep trying. Um, so let's see what that is. The um, it, I wonder if um allowing some employee parking at the Forest Theater um could be part of the answer. And um I I understand the concerns about increasing activity uh on those streets up there, but I think if it's employee parking, um, that might work and maybe it has to be with a shuttle so that it works when it's raining. Um, I don't think it's, I don't think the uh Forest Theater is the place for valet. So, so what to do? Um, I would still support going forward with a a valet test, if you will. Um, but I don't want to be one of just three votes to do that. I I think we have to have a lot more support uh up here for that. And um, I'm not sure I'm hearing that, but um I would be supportive of of at at least doing a pilot for valet. And I'm not really concerned that we might be missing the 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 peak of summer because maybe that's not the time to necessarily try something really hard. Uh, maybe trying it, um, you know, on a holiday weekend in the fall, uh might be the better time to do it. Um, and uh all efforts on uh on employees and enforcement. That's what I got.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, Hans, with everything you said, I just really absolutely completely agree with. Um, it, this whole thing just does feel like we're just trying to rush this and slap this thing together. And Jeff, as you mentioned with the RFP, I mean, by the time we get this, we're, it's going to be late for summer. There's just so many concerns I still have. Um, the fact that it doesn't feel like Carmel is a very legitimate one and and what Karen brought up about that it's going to bring more chaos to our streets, I think is very legitimate as well. Um, other valet parking concerns I have is is the concerns of neighbors um and and getting this into the residential areas. We heard um people felt very strongly about not using the Forest Theater lot or even the area around the Forest Theater and the impact it would have on the neighborhood. And I agree. Um, I also agree with the concerns about not using Sunset Center so we can have that for the employees. Um, I also still have safety concerns and and, you know, want to hear from our chief because I think you're going to create a bottlenecking situation if you've got cars coming in right off of our main intersection with Ocean and Junipero where the buses are. It it's just seems like it's going to create a traffic situation right there and I think that's a concern. Um, I know it says there's no pro prohibition um on valet parking in our zoning code, but we are basically allowing a business to operate on our city streets and there's something that doesn't seem right about that. Um, and I'm just concerned with some of these other um off-site parking spaces that are being considered because of the traffic implications those are going to have as well. Um, I'm very supportive of the idea of working with the chamber to create the shuttle. I think that's um a really good solution and finding an off-site location. And I remember, uh, we even mentioned last time, um, Bob was uh talking about MST and working with maybe like even a van or something that could work as well with employees. So I think that's a very strong area we could pursue. Um, and of course, the parking enforcement issue as well. I think that's something that we also need to pursue. Um, now, as far as AB four thirteen, um, that's another thing that's being rushed. Um, I went back and I reread our meeting minutes from last meeting and we didn't agree at all to start pursuing changes to AB four thirteen, so I'm not in favor of that. Once again, we agreed at that meeting that we'd have our chief um give us an update um on the program uh once it's in place for close to a year, uh what's working, what's not working, what might be changed. But um, I just don't like this idea of, you know, rushing to get a traffic engineer and all that when we haven't heard from our chief, who's the one that knows our community and knows, you know, he formulated the plan, so let's hear from him. And let's get him in the mix in this whole thing. Um, and the chief also mentioned getting um Rob Culver from Public Works as well to um give us his his thoughts. Um, when we start talking about reducing the speed limit to fifteen miles, repainting parking spaces and all that, I just don't think that's the answer and I think that's going to create a whole bunch of problems and issues. And, you know, going back to our strategic priorities in February, we did not have this on there. We didn't say it was not an important issue, but we just had it. Uh, we have staff capacity, we have council capacity. We can't just do everything. And so I feel, Mr. Mayor, that you've pushed us into this right now and it's pushed back issues such as the Bills Act, which is important that we get to and the pickleball issue. And there's other things. I mean, there's only so much we can do and I think that this is, we're rushing into it without thinking through the consequences. Um, and there's a lot that needs to be thought through. So right now, let's focus on working with the chamber for the employees and the parking enforcement and kind of just um focus on that rather than the valet parking.
Okay, Brandon, do you think we have feedback to stop pretty much everything?
Yeah, of course. Um, I, you know, I I said what I said and I do think that, you know, I do think that uh, I mean, I agree with Alessandra about AB four thirteen, by the way, I didn't talk about that. Um, I did, you know, I feel like what I wanted to do when I made my comments was leave the door open for valet parking. Like I said, all those things that I said, like it doesn't feel like Carmel. And and, you know, I put my, I put my list together about no in Sunset Center, no valet parking at Forest Theater, no valet parking at residential areas. Like I have my list of things, but, you know, I think that Bob's sort of instinct here about getting four votes, like, you know, I admire that. And there's a room to get, there's a room, there's room. Now, I don't, without saying that I would be willing to move forward or not without having seen it, you know, I don't want to slam the door shut on it. So there is a, you know, there is some sort of narrow window that, you know, narrow path that I would be willing to, you know, I'd be willing to like stick my neck out a little bit and and try it in the interest of, you know, trying something to 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 alleviate, you know, the fifty or a hundred parking spots on the margin or whatever, whatever that number is. Um, so so there's a, so I have a little bit of room. I have I have a little bit of wiggle room. You know, I given what I said about um, you know, the like timing of the RFP, like it doesn't seem like, um, you know, we're we're clearly not going to get it done for the summer, which is the busy time. But, you know, if, you know, if staff wants to like poke away at it for eight months and try and get it ready for next summer, I wouldn't necessarily be averse to that. You know, there are um, you know, a number of good, you know, the advantage of sort of putting it together before next summer if if there's a possibility, if there's a possibility of doing that and finding finding that path that I spoke of is that there are a number of test cases, a number of test weekends that could be um, you know, that could be utilized to try out a summer plan. You know, there's, Memorial Day is kind of late, but there's, you know, there's a President's Day weekend, there's Easter weekend, you know, there are times to, you know, there'll be times as the parking, as the parking demand sort of ramps up on the weekends to, you know, make a good, make a good college try. Um, and see it, you know, and see if there's a, see if there's a way to get it done. So I don't know whether that's the right thing to do or not, but that's uh, those are kind of my thoughts. Thank you.
Well, we're sort of creating a business opportunity that I'm not sure anybody would want to take in an RFP by narrowly defining a particular weekend. Um, I mean, I've been, I've been digging this in this quite a bit. I don't feel comfortable going forward with anything at this point. I I I don't want to be the only one here that's uh positive about trying to solve the parking problem in town by using creative solutions to try to find another hundred, hundred and ten spots, which is what we're, I think Brandon and I were trying to do with this. And if if you don't think that's a good thing to do, then we'll wait and see what it looks like at Bach Festival in a couple of weeks. It's not going to be good. So uh, I'm not ready to move forward with this with the kind of reception that I got here tonight. So uh, I can go work on other things. That's where I'm going to leave this. So I'm I'm disappointed in that because I think we have some good ideas. In terms of off-site parking lots, that's complicated and if it was easy, we would have done it. Uh, the uh Barnyard is owned by quite a few different owners. It's disconnected. It's not easy. They're not that interested. The uh, the lots over by Safeway clearly got taken up by other people at this point, so they're gone for a period of time, certainly this summer. Um, I am looking at long-term alternatives, which uh it's not several hundred workers. It's more like six hundred at least every day that take up our parking spots. So uh, I'm looking at long-term alternatives and there are some good ones and that's maybe where we should put our time, Brandon. Uh, because that's the long-term solution is getting five hundred, a thousand parking spaces at at places that we have to do that. And I'm I'm happy for us to research that and bring that back in sixty days or so and show you what those alternatives look like. But uh, to go forward with the valet service, I mean, the whole point is it has to be dynamic. I think we should expand the parking lot at Forest Theater because I I see what that neighborhood looks like when there's a show there and it's not good. And if we could get thirty-five more cars in there for shows, it would be worth doing with with or without the the valet parking lot. Um, if you want to see what what it looks like on a busy day, come down to San Antonio and Thirteenth and watch the freeway that happens there. It takes me five minutes to get out of my park, my my driveway. So we're all paying the price for this, doing nothing for fifty years other than losing forty-five parking spaces. And that's what we've done in fifty years. I'm disappointed in the AB four thirteen thing. We did not have a traffic engineer when we did what we did. And I met with a traffic engineer for free and he thought, saw our ideas and thought they were incredible. What he does for a living is defend people who are hit in crosswalks. And he said that after looking at what we're proposing, that he probably would not take a case with somebody that got hit in Carmel with the changes we're about to make. But I'm not hearing any support for even investigating that despite the fact that we executed the program we have without a traffic engineer. And and I think it's not helped us, but it's taken forty-five spots away. So unless anybody wants to change their mind, I'm going to drop support for all of these things because I can't go this on my own. I just can't. I can't take that that time and effort. And I I just don't feel comfortable doing it because I trust all of your opinions, you know? You you've convinced me to not move forward.
The only, the only thing that I would say is um, I feel like I did hear like five people that were pretty interested in the employee parking piece. Um, and maybe the, maybe the best solution is hard. Maybe it hasn't been done because it is hard and do you feel like it's impossible?
No, I'm not, no, I'm not going to stop working on
Oh.
the long-term idea. That's a long-term idea.
Oh.
No, I I, we need to do something.
Yeah.
And I know this group can figure it out. This, these were short-term solutions because the pain is getting great and and we're just getting into the really busy season right now.
Right.
And I I have a lot of people in the business community and they are not happy.
I was just going to say, I I'm.
We could lose businesses because people can't get to shop at their store and that is, we are to that point. So, again, unless you have some other input for Brandon and me and Jack, I can't, I can't go out on a limb and continue to do this because I I think there's some potential, but everything you said is true.
So my input is, is there a way to do like the MVP version of the employee parking? Where it did, like, maybe it's hard for us to, you know, it's a long-term deal to negotiate something with the folks at the Barnyard. But can we find a place where there's, you know, instead of two hundred parking spaces, can we find a place with like fifty or sixty parking spaces?
We're here tonight just so we can keep moving on. We're here tonight to get feedback on AB four thirteen and the valet service. The other things are still in play. I'm not, and and by the way, I'm not, I don't, I'm not being negative. I'm being realistic. We came here with some proposals and if there's no support, and I agree with everything everybody said, it's just a matter of whether we want to pursue these shorter-term alternatives to try to get a hundred spots to stop some of the pain that we're going to be facing really soon. And and all the points were good. And I and I, I'd like to move on to the other longer-term things and put our time into that, which we will. If the opinion of this group is the shorter-term things shouldn't be pursued right now.
Right. I think, totally get it. I, and I get the disappointment too. I, my only question is, can we convert what you're classifying as a long-term thing into a shorter to medium-term thing?
You 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 know me.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I'll do it, I'll do it as quick as we can. And Brandon and I are in great alignment in terms of staff and 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 us working together with our work group and so is Katie. So I think we've got enough feedback, Brandon, where to put our time. And again, I I'm not being negative.
No.
This is difficult.
I appreciate the energy. I, what I, what I'm trying to say is I think there are five people up here that said the employee parking thing is interesting. I also heard a lot of support for enforcement. So I know that it's technically we're focusing on these issues, but the broader issue here is is parking.
I think, I think, sir, I think I I heard you saying, I think between the mayor and I, we can come up with, you know, that it is, it's to maybe just be a shorter-term solution, but a quick solution, I think maybe is a better way to to look at it, a quick solution to the employee thing. I think there's, there's interest there, working with the chamber. We've already have those those channels open. You know, we can look at some of these spaces we've talked about where it might have been a valet opportunity. Maybe we just focus that on the employee stuff. So I think we we can work, we have a meeting set up with our our little, our parking group tomorrow, so we'll talk about this and and recollect. And it's really good feedback, all of it was.
It's the dynamic aspect of this
Yeah.
that was not received positively tonight.
I think that's right.
That's it. I mean, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
And so we'll focus on less dynamic things.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to singularly focus on the employee solution. I think that's great.
Yeah, yeah, I'm excited that you guys are interested in and and we'll come back shortly with the report. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for that discussion. And now we're going to move on to the, let's see, where were we? Number seven. I've got to get back to this. Okay, we're back to number seven. Receive an ad hoc report of the spacing requirements and needs list previously provided by staff and Indigo and provide direction on the police and Public Works building project.
Thank you, Mayor.
Another interesting one.
Council, um, while we're queuing this up, this is an ad hoc report out on the spacing requirements and the needs assessment list, which in March, we came. which in March, we came to you with a update on the police, police public works project, building project update, and we heard you. And out of the results of the questions that came up regarding the report, and then the, we developed the ad hoc committee. The mayor put one together, and it consists of Mayor Byrne and Councilmember Barron. Since March, we've had multiple meetings on the police and public works building project. And I gotta, I gotta say, out of all the ad hocks I've been on, this was probably the most productive that I've been on. We moved quickly, we really took a deep dive into this, we rolled up our sleeves. And I, and I want to thank both the mayor and the council member for doing that because we really took a close look at the needs assessment, and we're going to present that to you tonight. But we have some questions that go along with it that we can help move this project forward. So we're here to present that to you. And that's what I just said. All right. Part of the recommendation is three questions that we want, we're hoping to leave here with answers to. The first one is to review and provide policy guidance on the existing needs analysis, including the ad hoc committee's proposed new spacing requirements. You'll see on your reports, and as we go through this, there's a lot of changes we've made. Like I said, we rolled up our sleeves on this. The second hope, second recommendation we're hoping to come up with is determine if the city council is interested in exploring the tear-down and rebuild option as previously discussed at the February tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting, or if retention of the existing building and substantial remodels preferred, because that was one of the questions that came up. And then the third is to provide direction to staff on whether to continue with Indigo as the architecture firm or to explore other options. So we're hoping to leave here tonight with that. But as we move forward, we want to talk about this list because this is the question that came up, and we thought we were going to do in March is review this. But the ad hoc went through and reviewed this, and we set it up a little bit differently. So hopefully it's easier to read, and we're going to share with you. I'm not going to share every single thing here because we'll be here till two AM, but I want to touch on a couple of the highlights that the ad hoc committee, along with, you know, with staff involved, made some significant changes to the spacing. On this slide, you'll see these, this is the list you have in front of you. If you look at the pink column, that is what is existing in the police building, and Public Works loved the same. And then when we initially came to you, we had Indigo came up with their report of the spacing needs. The green column is the want, right? This is what the police would really want. And then the blue column is what Indigo presented at March, the March twenty-seventh meeting. We reduced some of the spacing. We presented that to you as what it could look like, being a little bit smaller. The columns we added are the staff commentary description because that was asked at the meeting. Tell us why, why do you need this? Is there a legal requirement? And what does it mean? Like, what are these, what are the things like a soft interview or a hard interview? What, what do those mean? So we tried to do that in these columns. But the last column is really the ad hocks collective discussion on the actual spacing that we need for our community size, our department sizes, and how do we make this fit on the footprint that exists right where the police department and Public Works Building is? So that's what we came up with through multiple meetings and honestly, some really good discussion. We didn't always agree on stuff, but we came up with these numbers, and I think we're in agreement now. So a couple of the highlights, like on this one, and hopefully you have it in front of you, but really it's, it's the front of the building. It's as you walk in. The things we need, we absolutely need is a public restroom. So when people come into the police department, they have somewhere to go. An interview room, as we talked about. An interview room allows victims of crimes to have a little bit of privacy with the police officer, to report their crime without other people coming in to complain about parking tickets or whatever. And also a multipurpose room. And we've talked about this before, is why we need a multipurpose room. The multipurpose room provides many things for us. One, it's an emergency operations center that we can stand up and use, but it's a, it's a gathering place for large events like Car Week, so we can have a, a place where we can meet and discuss that and have briefings for police operations and do some training. But if you look at it, we really reduced that size about half of what, or actually more than half of what we initially proposed with Indigo. So those are some of the major changes just on this page here. If we move to the next page, and we can go back to this, if anybody has any specific questions, we can always go back and pull these up. That's why I wanted them on here on the projector. On this one, it's the overall reduction in office and open spacing requirements. We had some pretty generous numbers for staff and office space, so we reduced all of that to, to reduce that footprint. And that's really on this page. On slide three, this is where we get into the, the soft interview room and the hard interview room. The soft interview room, we had as a place for victims to be interviewed by detective or by an officer. We actually accomplished this by having the interview room in the lobby, and that was a dual thing that was on the initial list, so we took that out. We don't need it because we have that in the lobby. We had office space and storage. They're, the more realistic numbers, as I just said, we reduced the sizing. And what's, what's a realistic size? A twelve-by-twelve room is more realistic for a lot of the supervisors and the managers in the office. So we reduced all that spacing.
All right. Chief, if I, if I may, you know, I think that, if I can just real briefly, that the key promise that we made from the last time we talked about this, which I think was in March, where, and again, the mayor set up himself and Mr. Barron as the ad hoc, and then again, Brandon, Ken, and Mary before him, the chief, the commander, and I have been working. Just from the standpoint of applying these numbers from our professional perspectives, but they've certainly not been proved by anyone outside our agency. So that's a really important nuance. And the ad hoc, again, the mayor and Mr. Barron said, we need to touch base with the, with the council. It's a different homework assignment, right, than Indigo originally had a year ago? And, you know, we're not going to spend any more money. So everything that you see is in-house. And, you know, one of the questions that, again, the chief posed to you is, should we go and talk about what we've come up with now with an outside professional who's done something like this before to, again, prove it and see whether we're accurate or not? So, thanks, chief. I think it's a, an important, it's not a nuance as much as it's a really important element of where we are at this stage in the homework assignment.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think that's important. As we look at this page, the thing that's going to stick out the most is the firing range. That was something that we've consistently had on here as a need. But when you really look at the amount of space, as a police officer, I love the range. I'm going to fight for it. I would love to have it in a police department. But I also understand, I've worked for four agencies. Three of them didn't have ranges, yet we still were able to meet our requirements for training. There are opportunities out there. It just makes it way more convenient to have it in-house and use it because we don't just use it for qualifications, we use it for training, we use it for retirees, we use it for other agencies that might want to come in. But understanding the cost per square foot, we took it out. We, we collectively agreed that this is something that you can have a police department without a firing range. It is possible. But as a police chief, I'm going to say, I would love to have it. And that was the major part of this. We reduced the sizing of, of the, a little bit of the locker rooms and other areas here as well. Oh, when we talk about the, I'm sorry, going back to soft interview and hard interview rooms. I just want to clarify on that. A, a soft interview room is for victims, a hard interview room is for suspects. So people are aware of that. We took out the soft interview room because we're going to do a multipurpose interview room in the lobby, which can be used for interviews and also for juveniles being held who weren't detained for parental pickup. That's a legal requirement, so we do need a space for that. The hard interview room, we took that out of here as well because with a slight modification to our booking room, that can be a dual purpose as well. You can, you can hold a suspect in a booking room and do an interview with them, and it meets the requirements really of a, of a holding cell or a booking area, or an interview room, that hard area. So we really took a really close look at what can we, what do we really need and what can we reduce to reduce the overall spacing. Here you'll see the ELC is completely gone. It's not gone, it's part of the multipurpose room that we could stand up. But we don't need an ELC and a multipurpose room, we just made those all as one. So when you go down these columns, you'll see that the spacing for each of these is a little bit smaller. It fits Carmel, it fits our policing. And in the end, when you look at it, if you look at the pink column, that's the existing column, right? Net area is fifty-nine hundred seventy-four square feet, with a gross area rounded to seventy-eight hundred square feet. If you go over to the, to the staff ELC recommendations, your net area is sixty-two sixty, and you're with the hallway space added, your gross area is about seventy-two hundred and sixty square feet. That's staff's estimations. So we're taking, we're actually meant it's smaller by not having a firing range and making the offices smaller. We can fit everything we need to run a modern police department where it is.
And the key there is, you know, it would be a different layout than we have in the existing facility. And again, we've not laid that out because we don't have the in-house expertise. But we think, and again, we may be off by ten percent or twenty percent, but, and again, certainly Mr. Barron and, and the mayor were at all the meetings. And again, these meetings were, were hashing over the numbers. It was going through on a very technical level, technical, professional level, working with the two department heads, the chief and, and Ken, on what are the, what are the needs? How, you know, how much room do you need for a commander's office or a sergeant's office? And looking at examples like, you know, how big's my office? Well, it's, you know, it's, well, you know, whatever it is, and how big's Brandon's office? And could, you know, who could sit in there? And how many people could we sit in there? And, you know, really kind of proofing it from the on-the-ground perspective. So thanks again, chief.
Yeah, thank you, boss. Again, yeah, these are our estimations, but if we brought in a professional firm, they might be off by a little bit, but we feel pretty confident we're close. So that's the interior of the police building. When we talk about the exterior, the numbers we came up with, they don't include the plaza space because I'm not out there measuring the plaza. Indigo was able to do that, but we're not measuring it. All I'm telling you in this report, or all we came up with, is the spacing requirements for parking, ADA access, kenneling for dogs, and, or not just dogs, but all animals. And the biggest number here, because our total number for this is ten thousand square feet, nine thousand of it is for police vehicle parking and staff parking. And that's an important thing because we wanted to take into account putting all of our police vehicles in a lot because right now we have three to four police vehicles parked out on the street. And we have five, six, sometimes eight employee vehicles also parked on the street. So if we have space off-street to park those vehicles, which we incorporate in this, we just freed up eight to ten or eight to twelve parking spaces on the street. And that goes back to the last conversation.
And that, you know, as Mr. Barron's question, if, if we're obligating the private sector to either pay the in-lu fee or provide off-street parking for their development, why wouldn't require the same of ourselves? And I think, I think the calculation was twenty-two off-street parking spaces for, and it's, Brandon, Brandon is taking a nap, I think, somewhere, but, but I think it's based on area, not employees. So I think we use the square footage figures, and I think it was twenty. Do you remember, Mayor? I think it was twenty or twenty-two parking space, off-street parking spaces. Yes, sir, yeah, for both, for both, the area of both buildings.
It was surprising, and Jeff's comments were eye-opening.
Yeah.
Turned off.
So we have ten thousand, if you look to the right, the column on the right, it's ten thousand nine hundred square feet. Again, the, the, the numbers of existing, it's, it's really, it's less space, but it's more parking. So it would look completely different here. So I, I just put this slide in to really summarize what I just said. It's the police building, which is the police function, the existing space, Indigo's second recommendation, and then the ad hoc recommended for square footage, both net and gross, for the interior and the exterior space, with just a couple of highlights of why it's so different. And again, that was a lot of work that we put in with the ad hoc committee and came up with these numbers to start with as a starting point. Now, my question to the council right now is, do you want to just talk police and go through these numbers with questions? Or would you like to hear Public Works and then go through it all collectively? Okay, Ken talks much faster than I do, so.
Mayor, council members. Next slide. So along with, with the chief and, and the committee and Chip, Mary worked very, very dove into a lot of this work. I know she'd been involved early on, Mary Billsey. What we have here is for our interior office space, the existing square footage is about forty-one hundred square feet, forty-one fifty-six, or sixty-five, to be exact. Indigo recommended six thousand and some change. And the ad hoc committee, the team, went back and looked at each of the spaces and say, where can we reduce? Do we need, I mean, I look at my office space, and yeah, true, as Chip was mentioning, I can, I have a nice, hard floors, and I got wheels on my chair, and I can roll around my office real easy. So I got space, I can probably put two desks in there. So we looked at all the office space and where can we reduce? And that's how we came down with the thirty-six fifty square feet. And what that did was we consolidated a lot of the administrative functions that we have in there. We also looked at shared multiple spaces. And I know working on a few projects in my past where we moved from everyone having individual offices to more of a bullpen cubicle style in certain areas except management. But we looked at options and, and offsets that we can do for reducing in-house spaces. Our, there's the, the summary, four thousand or six thousand, and then thirty-six fifty is what we, the ad hoc came through. The exterior space, the existing is thirty-two thousand six sixty square foot. Indigo recommended twenty-six four two two, and the ad hoc committee revised it down to twenty-two two oh six. And what we did in order to do that was we eliminated the log storage, which was previously, previously over seven thousand square feet. The operation yard space was reduced by twelve thousand square feet. The vehicle, Public Works vehicle parking, that's not employee, that's the vehicles themselves. We reduced it by nine thousand square feet from the, from the original of eleven thousand five hundred square feet. The workshop in the fabrication area, we, that's going to remain the same at thirty-seven hundred square feet. And same with the fleet maintenance, it's going to stay, remain the same at thirty-three hundred square feet. So I forgot, I didn't talk about the total, yeah, I did. So existing is thirty-two thousand, and of course, the ad hoc committee revised plan is twenty-two thousand. So the key takeaway is the total space for Public Works interior and exterior, exterior has been reduced, the ad hoc committee reduced it from the roughly thirty-eight thousand square feet to approximately twenty-five thousand eight hundred square feet, a reduction of thirty-two percent. These changes are emphasizing our core operational needs, our space efficiency, and reduced a lot of certain areas that were, I call redundant or discretionary areas. So going back to the chief's recommendation. Yeah, I don't know what this slide was.
So that, that's the spacing requirements, but again, we just want to put this back in there. There were still other considerations, whatever decisions made, that we wanted to include this again, based on the twenty twenty-three assessment report, that there are still these seven major issues. Whatever we do with the building, these would have to be addressed anyway. So we included this slide just as a reminder, refresher on that. So we leave you with whatever questions you want to ask us about the spacing, we're happy to answer. But again, with these three questions, which were on the recommendations for council to explore. and hopefully provide staff with direction moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just, let me reiterate one more time, counsel, that, and Mr. Delves and I talked about this, that, that, the purpose of tonight is not to be overly critical of what we did in the past or to vilify the process they went through before. It's really, because again, Mr. Barron and the mayor worked so well together with, with the staff team. You know, how do we, where do we go from here? And do we have your permission to, you know, we made all the improvements that you, to, to fortify the building, if you will, with the camera systems, make it safer with the solid core doors and everything. And, you know, where do you want to go from here? And you may not want to decide that tonight, but before we have a series of, I think, public meetings besides this one, we may have to, you know, make an investment in some outside professionals. So again, are our numbers accurate? And then again, what kind of dollar figures are we looking at? Ken did some work on, on the subgrade space, the under, under the slab space, unconditioned space just for the workspace, the shop, the shop space. And it's still, was it eight hundred dollars a square foot? Yeah, so, I mean, just a, a lot, a lot of money. So anyway, we don't know what the big number is yet, but it's still a big number.
Okay. Are there any more questions? Do you think we, do you think, are there questions from the council? On the, do you have questions? Anybody?
I had a couple of questions. Let's see. I guess for the chief, aside from the firing range, are there other things that you kind of fought for and lost? You know, what are those?
No.
So you feel like, you feel like it suits your, the needs?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, just by reducing the spacing sizes, we were getting everything we, we asked for. But that was, that was the only thing, the range.
Yeah, I'll make a, take this, take this opportunity to thank Dale and everybody who, who worked all those Monday afternoons. And say, I think I had this conversation with Nancy, Nancy Toomey this morning about the fire, about specifically the firing range. And, you know, we went back and forth a couple of times about the firing range. And I think in the end, and, and you should certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but in the end, my position to the chief was, okay, well, you know, we have this number, a thousand dollars a square foot. And this is how much the firing range is going to cost to build, you know, whatever. I don't even remember what number we were banding, banding about. And you have to decide, like, it was his choice. You know, you have to decide whether the, whether the time, you know, whether the time that we save by not having our officers drive to Laguna Seca. Now, we obviously have to pay them to be at Laguna Seca, just like we would have to pay them to be downstairs on our firing range. But the time that you save and sort of the inconvenience that maybe they have to stop on the way to or from work. Like, I want to say that, you know, in, in the end, it was his decision. And it wasn't a, he didn't, he didn't fight for it and lose. Like, he was given sort of the analytical problem to, to work out on his own. And this is the decision that he came to. And it was, it was a very friendly, it was a very friendly, a very friendly part of the discussion that we had downstairs. It would sort of typified how we, how we sort of went about it.
And the question is, how do you justify spending millions of dollars for that space at eleven, twelve hundred dollars a square foot on an eighty by whatever thirty room? That ends up being a pretty big number. So I returned with what it would cost to, in overtime, training, time at the range, cost for all that. You're looking at probably thirty to forty thousand dollars a year in those costs per year. It's going to take a long time to recoup that money in that's, for that space. And I remember, obviously, our previous meetings were, space is pretty expensive in Carmel, you know, and, and so try to justify it. It's hard to justify that for that amount per year. So, yeah.
How many square feet is the range?
What's that?
How many square feet is the range? Eighty by what?
It's a twenty-five yard range with a little extra space on the end, obviously, for the range. And then I, I want to say it's like twenty feet wide. Yeah.
We actually.
Did we measure it out?
Yeah, there's the, yeah, the loading area and the wipe-your-feet-off area. We actually looked at going down to, how many lanes is it now? How many lanes is it?
It's four right now.
We thought about going down to two, right?
Yeah, we presented in March, reducing it to two lanes. You could reduce the size quite a bit, it's still going to be a good-sized room.
And ventilation and all kinds of other things.
Exactly.
It's just the beginning.
The soundproofing.
You think it's, to Dale's point, I mean, you think it's inexpensive because it's just a big room. And then you have like lead cleanup or whatever cleanup, and you have ventilation and down there, reeds now, as everybody knows. Shooting ranges are not without their challenges.
Yeah, correct.
Other ones?
Yeah. No, I mean, it's, it's, it's sort of an analytical question. I just sort of tried to do some back-of-the-envelope math and like, if you made it like a two-person range or something, I came out around, you know, a million dollars. Like, it's like one point two million or one point one million. And if you, like, if you assume that you're paying for that with bonds or debt, you know, it's like fifty thousand dollars a year, right? And so you're saying it's thirty thousand dollars a year. So it's in the ballpark.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway. And the other question that I had was really for Chip, like, do you think, like, Ken just got here. Do you think that between you and Ken and whatever Bob had dreamed up before? Like, do you feel like we have a good handle on the needs before Ken's sort of been here for a bit on the Public Works side?
I, I do, sir. Again, Mary was working very closely with us in her, you know, before Ken got here for whatever it was, four or five months. And Javier, and we had, you know, the input of some real veterans in Public Works, like Rob Culver, really kind of, again, proofing, proofing numbers and saying, what do we actually need? And I think that, that Ken did a great job of explaining, instead of having all these individual offices. Actually, the question came from Mr. Barron originally, which was, you know, going, create these, these bullpen areas where there's certainly, there's some, you know, level of privacy so people can work. But in, in, in the kind of the working, the working environment today has more collaboration. So again, it wasn't like secluded, everybody had to have a, a closed door. So everything just really shrunk.
Do you have any?
I mean, the, the, obviously, the only thing I'm really wanting is a price tag. And, but I'm just trying to, just so for the order of magnitude, that, because I heard someone mention twelve hundred foot to build, hardened, and eight hundred foot to build non-hardened.
Public Works type stuff.
That's the, under the, under the slab would be eight hundred and then the top, the, the offices probably be a thousand, I think, we, we came up with. But again, we've not proved it with, you know, as Mr. Udell talked about tonight, these numbers are just going up so quickly and.
And maybe it's, it's a fool's errand to even try to put a, put that twelve hundred, eight hundred, hundred foot on it. It's still a big number. North of twenty?
We were, we were, I think, between fifty and twenty.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's, that, that's, that's different.
Less than half of where we were.
Yeah, that's a question.
Alessandra?
I don't have questions, I'll just wait for comments.
Okay. Public comments?
To officially close the loop, this is Nancy Toomey. On the question on the firing range, I support the current recommendation. Thank you.
Which is?
No firing range.
Okay, you've, you've changed, you, you were supporting it this morning, I think, so.
And now I'm supporting the no-go.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you, appreciate that. We must have one more. Yep.
I am supporting giving these guys whatever they need. I've said this before, and you know, gosh, maybe we can get the police station done before we put the new stop signs in that we've already waited twenty years to do. We're getting close to that with the police station. Hans was in high school when we had this first fucking discussion. So let's move along. Rumor has it, there's like forty million dollars in the safe here, give half of it to the police station, get it over with. Let's go. Still got twenty extra million to squander on other things. But let's stop talking about the police station. If you want the driving, or a driving range, a shooting range, that you can also let golf balls down, let's let them have it. Like Hans said, that's only servicing the lawn, about the same cost as sending those guys to Salinas. Now they're putting them in other harm's way. Let's keep them here, safe, happy. So that super concierge service that recovers, you know, stolen things and keeps this town what's really safe is the police. Not those stop signs, those aren't going to keep Karen Fralito safe. He is. Give him what he wants.
What do you think, Ken? You haven't seen Parker in action.
I think it's great. It's smaller, it's not green, it's more realistic. I don't know why it took so long to get here, except it was going in a different direction. I'm glad it's in the direction that it's going in. As far as Indigo, I think they didn't do us any favors and I am not in favor of continuing with them. I think there are other people that have worked in small towns, that build small police stations, that can do this job without using top-notch materials, that it will come out just what they need and what they want. And I agree. Let's try and get it moving, but we need to have the money to continue even this one. So that's a different story.
Thank you, Andy. Anyone else here? Anyone online? I don't see, I don't think so. All right, we'll bring it back for discussion. I have some things to say, but I'll go around the horn first.
Should I start?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. First, a very, very big thank you to you, mayor, and to you, Jeff, and staff that helped with this because this is getting us back on track and I think that is so important. I think the work you've done is really tremendous and helpful. And this is getting us closer to what we need and what works for our community. So thank you for the time you put in it, it's been very valuable. I'm fine with all of these smaller sizes, I think it's just much more reasonable and appropriate and it'll be much more cost-efficient as well. I do share Bob's concern though about, it's a little bit difficult to make the decision, especially on the teardown, if we don't have the cost comparisons. But right now, I'd say it probably is making more sense to do the complete teardown. But I would need the numbers to be able to, you know, definitely say that. And I agree with what Andy Carr just said, is that we should not be continuing with Indigo or Fred Muir and we need a local reasonable architect that understands our community and we can't afford to do a top-of-the-line premier, you know, state-of-the-art station. We need to do something that's reasonable, that works for us. And even if we're talking fifteen, twenty million dollar range, that's still a lot better than forty, fifty million dollar range. So thank you for this work. Like I said, I think it's getting us back on the right track. So, very good.
Thank you.
Sure. I was kind of looking at, you know, I was kind of looking at the prices spurred on sort of by Bob's comments. And, and I think that, I, I, I would say that I think twenty million dollars is probably not quite enough, but I don't think it's, you know, before we were talking about twenty to thirty. And I think, and I think we're, I think we're less than that. You know, we had a good conversation, as sort of Chip alluded to, about some of the, some of the, you know, a lot of the decrease and then some of the, some of the later increase was because of the employee parking that we, you know, that, you know, we added in sort of like be good neighbors and be good neighbors and, and do all that stuff. You know, I'm sure Hans is ready to talk about issuing bonds, so I won't, I won't go into that. I'll say that I think, you know, without, without tossing darts, you know, I would be fine rehiring Indigo. You know, I think, I disagree with Alessandra, you know. I think the most important thing here is to hire an architecture firm that has built police stations. I think more than anything else, you know, Chip alluded to, you know, Chip alluded to, you know, Dale and I and Chip and, and Ken and, and Paul did all this work and, and everybody else did all this work in-house. But I think we really need, you know, before we start, I think we really need an architecture firm that has, you know, built a police station, you know, hopefully more than one police station, to, to sort of take on this job. You know, with a local architecture firm that, you know, as Alessandra said, understands the community, is willing to build something. You know, we, we spoke about this a couple of months ago, when we talked about having a campus, a campus-like facility rather than, you know, it's sort of the big, sort of monolithic building that we were going to end up with as, as Indigo, as Indigo expanded it. So I don't really have a lot of comments other than, other than that.
All right. Hans?
Yeah, I, I mean, first of all, thank you both for doing this. I know that it was, I've heard that it was a lot of work. And I'm just glad that we have some people who we can trust and the staff, you know, who went through and actually looked at this thing line by line, which is what I think we've been asking, you know, folks to do. And it, it created this forcing function that makes you grapple with, what do we actually need? Like, on a, on a granular basis. And that's just, sometimes you just have to put the hard work in, right? And, you know, lo and behold, when you add it all up, you know, we need about the same space that we need now, which kind of makes sense, right? You know, I think it just speaks to the importance of like running a good process. And it's just kind of hard to believe that it hasn't happened until now, you know, six hundred thousand dollars later or whatever it is. Yeah, you know, in terms of the, in terms of like the renovate versus scrape and rebuild, I think it's like a little bit premature on that because it's okay to have these numbers about like, okay, I've, I've got a hundred square foot office here and I've got a hundred fifty square foot office here. But actually putting those things together is a, like a three-dimensional exercise that's kind of like Tetris. And sometimes in Tetris, you have like the space in between your blocks. And so it's, you know, you're not going to know exactly what you have or what can fit in that existing footprint until you get a professional on this. And I guess the second point on the renovate versus scrape is, I've kind of said this from the beginning, you know, if they're close, I'd prefer to just scrape it, rebuild, make something that looks nice, make something that has kind of, you know, maybe it's the campus feel that we're looking for, provide the kind of design direction that I think we, is another process flaw that we should be providing in advance before we just sort of let an architect run off and start running with the meter. So, you know, if it was like seventeen million dollars versus twenty million dollars, or eighteen versus twenty, or something like that, I probably would be inclined to just scrape it, rebuild exactly what we want, rather than being constrained by this kind of funky site layout. Now, if it's a bigger gap than that, then it's a discussion. So I guess my, my hope is that we can cost out kind of both options. But I love the fact that, you know, we found this efficiency. Like, for example, I think the best example is having like an E O C, this emergency operations center that just sits, like it's used four ti, three or four times a year. You know, maybe there's a storm and the other times it's like we're training. And so like, this forced us to sit there and be like, okay, we can just have a five hundred square foot room that we can use as our conference room. If we need to turn it into an E O C, we can. And that saved us, it's a lot of money that that saved us. So, great job.
Thank you.
All of the same start, really well done. You know, we, I, I feel like we have a great starting point. Now that I think we, what I'm hearing, we're all buying into it, feels like it's being owned by this council. And yeah, it's frustrating that it took a lot of money and a lot of time to get here. I'm not going to go on a witch hunt trying to, or a warlock hunt, trying to figure out why that is. This is a great starting point. And I know it was hard work and I appreciate whatever, what everyone has done, particularly staff and being realistic and just saying, we don't need two to three X what's involved. I think we need to start, though, going back, because last time we talked about this, at least three of us started talking about the idea of shared service model with other communities. And I, I think there was some sentiment at that point, well, that, that's, that's the cart before the horse. And that if we're not prepared to have that conversation, are we at risk of building, you know, a police station that is more than we need because we might move to a shared service model? The more I think about it, that conversation is, it's, it's a good conversation to begin. But I think we are years away from being able to. But I think we are years away from being able to make that a reality or even know if it's the right thing. And I don't think we can wait to, I don't think we can solve for that before we can get after this police building. So I think the main thing is that as we take this building on, that we, that modularity and flexibility be fundamental in the way we go about it. And that, from what I've seen, most, most modern buildings are that. Walls can be moved easily. I mean, you know, you can just build a shell today and put walls all, you know, that come and go and not have concrete walls like we do today. So I think that's the key is to have a lot of flexibility as we go forward. I do, so scrape or rebuild, sorry, remodel. I've kind of come around on that one too. I was more of a fan of, come on, let's just fix this building. Every time I go into that building, I go backwards on that. It, you know, Ken, I'm going to look forward to hearing from you after being in that building for two or three months. What, what you really think. But as I said last time, it, we have gutters inside the building and when it rains, it rains inside. I can't believe that, I got to believe that the structural integrity of that building has been undermined by 40 years of water intrusion and that it probably lacks the integrity that we want. We know it doesn't, it wasn't built to standards, you know, for earthquake. And my gut tells me that, I'll agree with Hans, that even if on paper it's going to cost, it looks like it might cost a little more to go new. By the time you actually dig in and redo all those systems, you'll end up spending a lot more. And if anybody, anybody who has ever redone the, the systems of a large building, and they all need to be replaced, so that's my gut. On Indigo, I, I would not renew our contract with Indigo. And I don't really mean that disrespectfully to Indigo. Hans mentioned that, you know, it, that perhaps we were a victim of the, an imperfect process. And I think to the extent that I'm disappointed with the outcomes that I saw from Indigo, I, I think that's a result of an imperfect process, an imperfect leadership. And I'm sure that they did what they were told to do. And in the end, it wasn't aligning with, I think, with this group. And let's face it, there's three new faces up here from just six months ago and we have, we have different views. So I, I would not reengage with them. Jeff, to your point about the importance of hiring an architect with, that does police stations, I think that's how we got Indigo. So I'm, I'm not as concerned about that. I don't, I mean, building the Salinas Police Station was, would require that, I believe that would require that architect. But we're building the Carmel Police Station. You know, we don't have the same needs. We don't need to build a jail and a lot of the really, you know, hardening aspects that most other police buildings in larger cities would need. So I'm, I'm interested, but I'm not stuck on that. I'm more, I'm more interested in getting a reasonably local architect who understands that Carmel is what it is. The only other thing I'll say to this is as we go forward, let's always keep reminding ourselves that we need to take on our office space, all of our space as a portfolio and that we can move things around. We can restack the deck. You know, do we really need all of the offices in, as an example, in the Park Library for librarians? Can we use those, can we consolidate and use some of those for other functions? Whether it's Public Works, you know, like the tree guys, right? They don't necessarily need to be in your building. But we should just think, think of that, that there's other places and the Vista Lobos building as part of that if we, there's space there. It's a good start.
As this process was going on, Andy Carr called me up and said, I have a relative who's an architect and I asked him who we should hire to do the police station. And I had a Zoom call with them for an hour and they were interesting. And they have an office in Monterey and their headquarters is in Redding. And I asked the chief if we could give him a tour and I did of the police station. And they had already given the tour and they were actually asked to be one of the bidders, I guessed originally. I never investigated that. So I gave him the tour. Three days later, they gave me back a three dimensional model of our existing police station, which they got from plans that are on our website. Rotate, cut, slice, do whatever. And included in that was a floor plan of a police station that was similar to one they, they built up at Lake Shasta, same size, sort of a little bit smaller than what we came up with. But complete schematic package with 3D rendering of the actual building and what it would look like in three dimensions, could be rotated. You could change the skin and the type, it had Carmel stone on it. And then they sent me a, I didn't ask them to do any of this. They came back with a spiral bound, probably 15 page, you have one in your office, I believe, that with every possible view and rendering different views of the whole police station. And I said, that's pretty impressive, like, is that what you do for all your clients? They said, no, but we love Carmel because we have an office here. They developed the, the public, or the public safety buildings for Monterey. I think Chip had some experience with that. And 20 years ago, was it? 15, yeah. And, and then I guess Monterey ended up not doing it, but they needed temporary buildings to carry it through. And those public buildings, which they designed and put in place are still there 15 to 20 years later. And they're working and there's, Monterey is still trying to figure out what to do. It wasn't their fault, I think, that the project didn't happen. We've seen how that looks. So then they said, send us the numbers that we just saw and we'll redo the whole thing and give you schematics of what the building would really look like. We have a wonderful concept for what it would look like. We love how Public Works and all that's integrated. We could do the whole thing. The other thing they told me was absolutely do not even think, I know Dale, you want to remodel the building. I felt that was a good way to go all along. They said, absolutely not. Absolutely not, no way. That building cannot be saved. It was a bad building the day it was built. Everything about it is wrong. The equipment, all the stuff has to go, just what, basically what Bob just said. And don't even think about it. Just pay $800,000, scrape the building and start from scratch. It's going to save you a lot of money. You'll end up with the building you want. So that changed my mind. Okay, so they said, we'll give you exactly what you need, schematics and all that for free. I brought that to the meeting and rightfully so. Jeff said, I think that's a step too far because we haven't been asked to do that with our task. He's been councilperson longer than I have and I think it was good advice. So that's where we got to. And given that level of service and the fact that they have a local office and, and we have to do an RFP and go through all that, but that just proved to me that there are people out there that love Carmel, that understand Carmel, that have an office here and want to help us. And if they're out there, there are probably other ones just like them because we're special. People love Carmel. And, but they would for free if, if it was authorized. I don't know how we could for free, but they would put a complete schematic package together, more detailed than what we got from Indigo, for free. And I think that offer is still out there, although I have not talked to them since this discussion happened and we were told to stand down. So I think the numbers are good in terms of, I, I have done a lot of research on the whole consolidation effort of the peninsula. There's a white paper out there, I think all of you saw it, that is pretty extensive. And I summarized it and I analyzed it. And I agree with Bob. The Monterey Weekly had an article about this. Did everybody see that? Nancy sent it to me. I agree with Bob that that's going to take time. I mean, it's taken a long time to do our fire department, so police department would probably take just as long. But that's out there. I think that what we've picked here is a good compromise. I think if, if there was a consolidation, we might save 2,500 square feet, right? So we've got 2,500 feet that we're using for lockers and other things that we might not need. But I think that's a really good investment. I think, I think we do what we have here, however we're going to do it. We're going to end up with a highly functional station. If something changes in the future, we, as Bob said, that space could be repurposed to do something else. We should probably keep that in mind, but not design the building based on that. That's my opinion. So I think, I agree with everybody. I think we've done a good job. I really enjoyed working with Jeff. It's the first time I've done that. He brought up some really good points. It was a friendly meeting. It was a serious meeting, the ones we had. And I think we came up with a good work product and I feel really comfortable with these numbers after all the things I've done. I don't, I don't have any doubts about not hiring Indigo and continuing on. I agree with Alessandra on that. Nothing against them. I just, after what I saw the other architect do, I just, I just don't feel good about it. I also have met a project manager this morning and I actually bumped into Chip and Brandon while they were walking down the street as, as we were going for a walk. He was here tonight in the tweed coat and he is unbelievable and he has an office in downtown Carmel. He is absolute world-class expert at project management and he could help us do this project. Again, we have to go through RFP and all that. But there are people around that are highly competent, sitting right in our city and we can find them to help us do this project and do an amazing job of it. I have no doubt at this point. So how we proceed is a question. In terms of how we do it and how we finance it, I've been studying public-private partnerships and talked to a number of people. Salinas built their police department with public-private partnership and something like 25 years, they own it. Same thing with their library, they did the same thing and I guess it was highly successful. Everybody's telling me that's the way to go. We have, we have three really valuable pieces of real estate in this town. Sunset Center Parking Lot, Vista Lobos Parking Lot and Public Works Yard and that whole area. All three of them are very expensive, valuable pieces of real estate. And we could absolutely find developers to help us do public-private partnerships to develop all three of those properties and we should pursue that. And that's what I was referring to earlier with Brandon because people have come to us already with some opportunities. So I think we should do that before we go out and sell bonds and stuff. I think we should look to see if we could do something like that that doesn't cost as much because we own three valuable pieces of real estate that people would like to develop in one way or another. And we control it. It's our property. So we're in control of what happens with it and that's the beauty of it. So that's a broader perspective than the police station, but I think we have some things to look at in terms of how to finance this and the whole opportunity. But I think we should go find a professional to take us one level further and we've seen that that can happen pretty fast. All right, that's my.
I think if the council continues to empower you and Mr. Barron to work with our team, we can, we can put together an RFP packet and get it back out on the street and work to close out our relationship with Indigo based on your direction. And we can do that pretty, pretty quickly.
Well, we're still under discussion.
Yeah, I have a, I would ask, you know, for a couple of pieces of direction from the council. One, one is, you know, Bob spoke about moving our city office space around and I'm butchering your words, but about, you know, the possibility of, and to just use, maybe it was Bob's example, I think it was your example, just move the Forrester down to the library. Like I may not necessarily agree with that, with that example. But I think that this is the one opportunity, I think this is like the one opportunity to do that. We have a bunch of, we have a bunch of fixed spaces. We have City Hall, we have the two libraries, well, eventually two libraries, not three libraries, two libraries and two libraries at some point else. And I don't know, do we have people in any other buildings?
Vista Lobos has.
Vista Lobos, oh, so yeah, so the other thing was like, so do we move, do we start moving employees around? Like is that something? And, and, and to me, the perfect example is Vista Lobos. Like I don't feel comfortable having IT up at Vista Lobos if that's where they are. Like whoever's up there, like that's a wreck of a building and, and it feels like we just shouldn't have employees there. So that seems to be part of a larger conversation. Should we move employees to the new building? Like is that, should we scrap the Vista Lobos building? Or at least make plans to scrap it by getting the, by getting the two employees that we have in there, however many that we have in there out. And I know some of them are the environmental employees and they're coming out anyway. But does that leave anybody? You know, is that, so my question to staff, you know, and I think, I think this is really a question for you, is do you think that we should move any employees around in terms of where people should be? You know, those two, Bob spoke about Public Works people. And I think that's a question for later, but I think that that's a question.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great, you know, question for, you know, our, to talk about with our ad hoc, with Ken there, with Brandon there. I mean, my first blush reaction, sir, would be, yeah, let's, let's move them into a more conducive space, one that's more accessible because they move, you know, laptops and screens and things out. So yeah, that's a great, that's a, that's a great idea.
We could build a data center of sorts in this.
I mean, I think that, I think the, I think the decision is ours, but I think the recommendation is yours.
And again, I want to obviously talk to, talk to my colleagues and associates as well.
And then the other quest, you know, the other questions are, you know, are we, should we just issue an RFP to, like what do we want the RFP to do? Like I don't, like I don't know if Dale and I should just go and bicker amongst ourselves in, in the basement room about this RFP or that RFP or some other RFP or whether we want to get more direction from you, from, from the three of you about, you know, tear down or rebuild or do we want to release a more complicated RFP? Or, you know, what are the things that you think are important about an RFP? Like I don't, I don't know, like, like do we want to have that discussion next month?
I think, I think, Mr. Barron, that, that we can prepare a suite of options for the rest of the council to consider and choose from. And with, you know, in some cases, there's going to be a recommendation from Paul or from Ken or from Brandon or from the two of you to provide some guidance and advice to the rest of the council and we'll get, you know, like Brandon always, you know, the thumbs up, thumbs down, red light, green light on each of these different options for the RFP. So that'd be my suggestion.
Does that work for you?
I'm, I'm fine with, you know, what you just said, Chip, about, you know, an RP options with also including the project manager and an architect. Dale, I was with you with everything up until you said private partnership with developers. You lost me on that one, so I.
Do some research in it.
I, I think we need information. I know people like Nancy Toomey have been asking and asking and asking, how do we finance this? And we need a whole list of options, bonds, you know, everything that's out there. But that, that's getting into scary territory. And I have said on the record before that I don't want our city lots developed, our Sunset Lot, our Vista Lobos. So even going there right now really worries me. So I, I, I'm with you on everything else other than that.
As, as a member of this council, it, we would be remiss in not looking at it.
We can look at it as a large option package that Chip could provide to us.
We have to look at the opportunity because it's, it's, well, I'm looking out five years of what things are going to look like. That's, that's where I'm looking.
Well, we need lots of options on, on all of these.
Can I suggest, well, we'll be on the scope of.
Yeah.
Can I make, can I make one, I want to make one more comment that I think is actually important. You guys both touched on it and I know it's 9:38 at night and we've been at this for a while. But I feel like this is the moment when we make bad decisions. Like this is the moment when we're tired and we make dumb decisions. And, you know, this whole question about sequencing of like the order of operations here with, you know, the outsourcing of the police department or the shared services model or, you know, whatever we want to call it. I personally, my instinct is that it's not a good idea. Like I'm the guy who just had Sergeant Bruno like hand deliver my wife's purse to my front door. That being said, you know, I think this is another one of those process traps that, you know, there's a chance we might look back on in a few years and say, why did we do that? And I feel like the time to have that conversation about the future of the Carmel Police Department is now. Like, so just like I'd rather have the conversation about space planning before we spend $500,000 on an architect. Like, doesn't it make sense that we would rather have the conversation about the future of the police department before we spend $20 million on a new building?
I thought we, I, I thought we kind of had it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, just my opinion, having studied this a lot, I don't think that's possible. It's a, it's a big.
Put it off the table.
It's a big, longer term. It's a big, longer-term situation that we could talk about. And it was brought up by the three of you at a public meeting. And Monterey Weekly just covered it. I don't think we should go there in designing our police station. I just said that earlier. I think, I think we're probably overbuilding if that happens, but I don't think that's a problem because we can always use office space. So I think if we do that, we're just going to stop this whole thing for five to 10 years and we'll still be there.
Yeah. I mean, I'm okay.
Jeff, do you agree with that?
Yeah, I think, like, my, like, everybody kind of roundabout commented on it. But my impression, my impression was that the, the sort of joint services model right now is just off the table. We're going to proceed with just building a police and public works building. And we're, we're just not going to have that.
Unfortunately for us, we are the first. We are the ones that actually are going to move and do something about our police station before all the other people do. And that's just how it is. I mean, we're just faster than the other people.
And I just wanted to add something. I agree with what Bob and Dale said about it. And back when I did bring that up, the part of the quote that everyone keeps cutting out is I said 20 years from now. I never said that it's something we're going to be doing right now. And realistically, it's not something we're going to do right now. And I think the smart thing to do is to get a reasonable-sized building that can, as Bob said, later on can be repurposed for different offices. So, I mean, this is what we need to do now. We need a police station. I mean, we've heard for years that we need a police station and we need to get a police station built. So that's what we need to do right now.
And we will always have a police station. I mean, even with the consolidated model, you don't get rid of the local people. We have, we did it with our fire department. It doesn't look much different.
Yeah. But this is something that's a, a long-term thing we get into.
I mean, I wish we could make our fire station a little bigger. And it is a, you know, we're a shared model with Monterey. So I think, I think that we have enough direction to go with our, have another meeting with our group. You're going to get some information on what RFPs look like and what are the options. And we'll discuss it in the group and we'll bring it back.
Yeah, we'll come back.
Yeah, I think we have some great direction.
Yeah, I'm happy with, I'm happy with your, I'm fine with your suggestion. Just scope out some options and bring the options back.
All right. Nice discussion, everybody. Yeah, we are. We still have another item to go, too.
Don't we have to vote to extend?
Oh, we haven't approved it yet, okay.
All right. The city attorney, do first reading, but Mr. Swanson, do you have anything to add to the agenda topic, the next item?
It's first reading and introduction of ordinance number 202503, adding section 2.52686 to the Carmel by the C municipal code, which is paid parental leave. Nothing to add other than we, we made the changes, council recommended, and that's what's in front of you.
Okay. Brian, what do we need to do?
Oh, you would need to request that I read the title of the ordinance as step one. And then after I do that, someone should make the motion for recommendation two.
All right.
So I'll assume that was a request to read the title. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Carmel by the C, adding section 2.52.686 to the municipal code to establish a paid parental leave benefit for city employees. And now appropriate action would be to move, what you can say is move recommendation number two.
And move recommendation number two.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Oh, sorry, yeah, you're right.
Just in case.
Do we have a public comment about this subject?
No.
Nancy Toomey says thumbs up. That's the public comment.
There's no one with their hands raised.
Thank you for, thank you for your comment, quick comment, Nancy. All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Protemdels?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarmov?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Future agenda items. Anyone on the dais wish to add an item for consideration of future, future council agendas?
Yes.
That was a long yes.
Which one?
I'm going to look at Brandon.
What's drama?
These estimates on the design guidelines, you're sticking to them?
They were, so Mr. Barron's talking about Design Traditions 1.5, Planning Commission in August, Anna Banana, and then we're hoping to get to council in September, October.
Okay, so my recommend, my ask for a future design for a future agenda item is that the council hear the design guidelines in October. However you get there is, however you get there is up to you. But that's my, like, I've been waiting on this for four years, so that's my date is October.
So, yeah, so we're, we're doing a gender review next Tuesday, a week from today at 10 a.m. And then next Friday, I think it's the 12th, I'll send out August, September and October for you. And you'll see that on October, Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Jeff. I, I agree with that. Hans, do you have any?
No, I was just going to say that the ADU ordinance is coming before the planning commission this month, so we're supposed to see it next month, is that right?
Right.
And assuming that there's not significant revisions from the planning commission?
Correct. And odds, I think the odds is on for August for you, I mean, it's, it's way too big an agenda at this point in time, but we'll, we'll, we'll pare it down next week and get you.
Alessandra, do you have any?
Well, I would say the presentation we had from the Water Management District is very important. It's something a lot of people are interested in. So I would suggest if we could do a workshop on that or combine it with something with the housing element, but somehow do something where we can get a lot more people involved and we can learn a lot more about it.
Would you like to have all of us there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so workshop with all of us. I, I think that's a great idea.
And a joint one, maybe with planning commission as well.
Jeff, let's work on that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, what I'm interested in, you know, to Alessandra's point, the thing that would cause me to say, yeah, maybe we should do that, was Dave Stolt's comment that if we use the water, we get more water. And I would really like, you know, we, the discussion that we had last time about water, about sort of reserving the water for the affordable house, for the affordable housing projects, which I think we all, I don't, I don't mean, which I think the council decided was important. I think that's still very important. And so I think that when we have that discussion, getting Dave Stolt here again or getting the Water District here again to say, hey, if we give people water to, to add on bedrooms, you know, to add on bedrooms, can we replenish that water for our affordable housing projects? I think that's a, that's a really important, like, that's a really interesting nuance.
Yeah, a key to deal with the water allocation formula is ensuring that members of the public, whether they're commercial, residential or anywhere in between, knows that they need to come and speak to you to advocate for their position. So again, Ann and I will work on that in the chamber and the CRA, making sure people come and say, this is where you should be prioritizing 16 acre feet of water or whatever you're going to allocate.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. That concludes tonight's public agenda. Thank you to staff, council and members of the public for your hard work putting all that information together and the public for your active participation. We stand adjourned.